We convene in an open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on Thursday, November 21st, beginning at 6:55 PM. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we do have business to conduct. Disruptions are not permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but insist that we remain respectful and civil. We appreciate your cooperation in this. We have no public hearing at the beginning, so we will begin with our pledge. Please join student Isaiah Jackson in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Mr. Jackson, can you stay standing right here for just a second? I just wanted to make sure our board knew who was in front of us today. This young man, Isaiah, his favorite subject in school is reading. His hobby is drawing and art, and of course, his favorite food is pizza. Isaiah, we're super proud of you and thankful for you being here tonight to lead us in the pledge. You keep working hard, okay? Thank you, sir.
All right. At this time, we will take a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move on to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on our agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding any item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest, no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items tonight?
President Chapa, we do not.
All right. With no open forum speakers, we'll move on to the Committee and Staff Report section of our agenda. Our first report tonight is from our Finance and Academics Committee, which is chaired by Secretary Richardson. I'll turn it over to Ms. Richardson.
Hi. Good evening. We met with Finance and Academics Committee this past week and received an update from Kelly Horn. One of the details that Kelly really got into it with us was regarding how AISD property has to go web out when it's being sold. There are rules, there are regulations that when we are selling a property that is currently owned by the district, there are different rules and regulations that we have to follow that is different than it's just a typical selling of a property. He walked us through what that looks like, the different policies, the procedures, and then also explained to us why it's different as well. He walked through a little bit as well of, showed us the different properties that we do have available, explained how it would work if we ever wanted to do something different with it, and what it means when we do keep those properties in our holdings. The other thing that we did was we had a breakdown given to us and shared by our demographer. Some basic results came in, and they're getting that data cleaned up. And once the data is cleaned up and able to be disseminated in a way that's shareable, that will go out to the rest of the board and to the public.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We'll now move on to our next committee report, our Governance Committee, which is chaired by Vice President Sarah McMurro. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Governance met this past Monday, and we had one agenda item, and that was to review and complete the draft of our 89th Texas Legislative Session Agenda on behalf of our school district, and that is the draft for your consideration tonight. Trustee Fowler, trustee Haynes, and myself, along with Superintendent Dr. Smith, had the opportunity to Zoom with our friends at Strive and really iron out the draft that you see and try to be as concise as possible while still getting our district's legislative topics across and advocate for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Our next report for the evening will come from the administration. It is our Fall Demographer Report. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to welcome our Chief Financial Officer up to the podium, Darla Moss. She'll introduce our guests tonight. Darla and Kelly Horn work on a regular basis with Zonda, and Zonda has been doing our demographer report for quite a while. Darla.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, President Chapa trustees. Tonight, we want to provide the board with an update from the district's demographer, Zonda Demographics, regarding our enrollment trends. This report will assist the board in understanding shifts in student populations and anticipated needs for future facility planning, staffing, and resource allocation. Mr. Rocky Gardner with Zonda Demographics has worked with the district for several years, as Dr. Smith stated. He and his team has been closely analyzing key data, including population trends, housing developments, and enrollment patterns to help us understand how these dynamics will impact AISD in the coming years. So I will introduce you to Rocky. Thank you.
Thanks, Darla. Good evening, President Chapa trustees. Dr. Smith, good to be back in Arlington once again. Like I've said, it's my first client ever, so a couple of years is kind of an understatement. It's getting close to 20 now. So this is our annual report. In the past, sometimes it's come in the spring, but this is our research that our team's been working on for quite some time. So first, just by taking a look at where we are today, you know, 53,848 students is your snapshot number, and that's what your history is. So we base our projections snapshot to snapshot. Our forecast came in just a little bit higher at 139 students off. That's less than a half a percent. So we're pretty happy when we come in that close. There's always going to be campuses that are a little bit higher than that, and really, our biggest struggle is kindergarten and first grade. That's where we came in low, and that's been a trend that's been emerging throughout Texas and throughout, really, in the United States. Everything from low birth rates to homeschooling since COVID. There's a, you know, we think maybe there's 20,000 more students homeschooling now since COVID. So there's a lot of things impacting that, but that's really, and I'm going to show you this later, kindergarten and first grade drive your enrollment. Once we get them, you can see those cohorts down there that the bottom, those cohorts represent your kind of like a retention first to second grade, and they're all very close to one, which means once the students here, they stay. So it's just kind of capturing that group. The economy's been strong. This chart probably looked almost the same. If you were here last year, this chart looked almost the same. Unemployment rates have been pretty flat all throughout Dallas-Fort Worth, and that's really because we're the number one housing market in the country. We're, our population growth in Dallas-Fort Worth is probably the fastest growing anywhere in the country, and really, by a long shot, if you look there, Houston's second, but there's a big drop off after that. So there's a lot of demand for housing. We're still delivering it. We had a little bubble a few years ago when COVID hit, and we realized, and interest rates went up, and then starts got way out of front. You can see that purple line gets real high there. So then they stopped building so they could sell off all their inventory, and then next thing, new closings were above starts, and they're, so they're trying to find that middle ground. Looks like this last quarter, this is the end of the third quarter, they got that 48,000 numbers where they're sitting now. It'll probably tick back up close to 50 again, maybe by summer if some interest rates go down. I think we know in Arlington, things are not going crazy from a housing perspective, but what's really interesting, and you're going to see pretty small numbers here, but what's interesting is how much there's, they are finding every little, developers are finding pockets. You have small developments. I mean, we've got a few, the color on these maps, and I know the numbers are real small. You probably have to study them with your glasses on later, but where you see color is where we have the most activity. That's the best way to think about it. So when you're looking at it later, yellows the most activity. So you can see that Thornton has the most activity currently, but they're going to run through lots. But you've got a couple of areas where we've got over 100 homes coming, and that's pretty significant. This chart here shows a distribution of those, and there's lots of little polygons on there. You almost can't see them. We've got 16 actively building developments. That sounds like a lot. And 28 future subdivisions, which is just, sounds again like a lot. Keep in mind that average number of those futures is like 35 homes. There's some of these are real small, five and nine developments, but we are seeing some little pockets. And what's good is that we have some of these, this is main living in Terrence Oaks, so these are some smaller denser homes, but you're going to see a little bit of yield. We're not seeing real high yields from these new products yet, you know, but those at least can keep some consistency. There's another one here, the Preserve at the Forum is coming soon. That's 165 homes. So even if it yields around .4, you know, you're looking at 40 to 50 students that could come from that. Great Southwest Crossing, you know, that's Hamilton Commercial. They've not really done anything. It's just been there for a while since 2022, so we're just kind of keeping an eye on it. I didn't put, just for brevity, I didn't put all 30 futures in all 28 of the active ones. I figured that'd be enough slides for tonight. Multifamily, of course, is a significant piece in Arlington ISD. We've got a lot of students in multifamily. It's a very mobile population, too. It's a very, a lot of movement, and a lot of that movement's occurring as occupancy rates have declined in Dallas-Fort Worth. And what's happened is it's more of a supply thing. We added so many units, 18,000 apartments get added. You can see where that occupancy gets distributed, you know, really low. Most of the apartments that we've seen in Arlington, especially the ones on the lower, the less expensive ones, they still do pretty well, but because of this drop in rates, the rates are shifting. So people kind of follow rents sometimes, so that's where we begin to see a lot of movement. There are about 1,600 multifamily homes under construction right now. 255 of those are senior units, so we don't expect to see very many students there, right? None, hopefully. 2,000 future multifamily units in various stages of growth, and so there's still some planning. Some, it's just going to take a while to come online because these occupancy rates are fairly low. But here's a couple, the Villia Traditions, 218 single-family rentals. Single-family rentals are a pretty big deal right now in just about everywhere you go. I think builders are looking for ways to build homes and populate those homes, and it allows families to get in with a little less, you know, a little less money for entry because they're not having to come with a down payment. Creekside at Grand, that's 320. They just began leasing in August, and then you got the little villas at Barton, luxury townhomes. One thing about all the newest multifamily, that they have a higher majority of one-bedroom homes now. They're not really targeting families at all, you know. They're trying to find that niche there. So if you look at your yields, you see less than .25, those real little yields, that means that we're just, those are those significant, the newer ones, they're just, they're not very much housing there for students. This is a newcomer lever chart. We started looking at this a couple of years ago. I'm not sure if you recall, but what we do, because we have so much history, we look at the student ID that were provided, and if that student ID was in your system last year, but then this new file that we got, it's not in the system, we consider that a lever, a student that's left the district. Now, we don't count 12th graders as levers, right? They all, we want them all to graduate. Then we have newcomers, and newcomers is just the opposite. It's a student ID that was there, was not there last year, and this year we have it. They're new to the district, and these are first through 12th graders. We don't count the kindergartens in that group. But you can see it improved a little bit, you know, your net difference was about 2,452 students, but you can see your levers decreased last year, you know, going into this year. Your newcomers, it dropped off as well, but that, again, is because of some of the systematic things with the housing market. There aren't people moving as, so we're not turning over homes. People are staying in that home with that 3% interest rate, and so, you know, if they move somewhere, it costs them more money and probably less house. So with that, I'll jump into your forecast. I'm forecasting growth, I mean, growth next year. The district's going to decline again by almost 1,000 students. This is a trend. It's kindergarten. These kindergarten classes are coming in so low that those classes just stay small. If you look at your rate, that you've got 3,700 12th graders, and your kindergarten class is 3,300, so you're losing 400 students just through attrition. So really, that 998 negative that we're showing there is probably closer. You're probably dropping about 500 students, and that's, if we can stay on trend with the kindergarten class, right around 3,500 students. It's a challenge. I've got some campus slides here, too, and I'm happy to talk to you about some of them if my memory's, but there's some pretty small numbers. We're not going to discuss them too much. You can see a couple of slides here of elementary. We've also projected numbers at your junior high and your high schools. Now, what I've done is I put a couple extra slides in here this year, just because there's been so much movement at the kindergarten level. I wanted to give you an idea of how impactful kindergarten can be. So this first one is like, if your kindergarten enrollment could return to pre-COVID, you know, we get, a lot of the students are here, they're in the district, right, there's just probably some homeschooling going on, but if we can get those kindergarten classes back to over 3,700, then we can get your enrollment back to over 50,000, I think, you know, within eight or nine years. Now, the flip side of that is if they go, if they continue to drop, you know, if we continue to lose students for whatever reason, then of course, that year dropped down to around 48,000 at that point. So with that, I can wrap that up. We take questions. We've got 50 homes currently in inventory, 300 lots are available to be built on right now. Like I said, kindergarten enrollment, I think, is going to just impact, you know, these kindergarten first grade classes. I did notice that, you know, when you see, you see a little jump at your seventh grade cohort, which is a good thing, because that's probably students that are returning at that point, but we think that 50,000 is probably where you're settling to right now. I talk kind of fast, but I'm happy to take questions.
All right. Do we have trustees with comments or questions? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. So you did say this was a trend across the state. It's not something that's just Arlington-based.
Kindergarten enrollment, yes. I mean, kindergarten's been down for several years. I mean, I think families are forming later, so, you know, children not having, or adults, young adults are not having children at a younger age, so they're having those older, so it's causing a little bit of delay there. So it is something that we're beginning to wonder when it'll catch up. And then I do think since COVID, like I said, there's been 20,000, there's a lot of homeschooling going on, and that's where it's starting. That also might be the ones that you get back in sixth and seventh grade, and the parents are realizing that, you know, they don't need that.
Have you seen any kind of a jump from kids that start with this pre-K4 into kindergarten into first? Is there any kind of movement there?
I haven't seen, well, like I said, I haven't seen a, like a, would you be saying that it caught, you know, holding on to those pre-K3 and 4? I do think it's important. I do think we're staying consistent. I can't say that we've been able to build anything from it yet, but I just firmly believe that from the cohorts that we're seeing, once you get them, I think you hold on to them. I think it's just a figuring out a way to get them here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other trustees with comments or questions?
I have just a couple.
Sure.
And I think you just addressed my first one with Ms. Fowler's question about pre-K. You know, we made a pretty substantial investment in free universal pre-K a couple of years ago, and it's the right thing to do, you know, for our students coming, our students predominantly come from the low socioeconomic backgrounds, and high-quality pre-K is a big lever to drive student achievement, so that's the reason alone to do it. But it is part of our enrollment growth strategy, and so I think I asked you this last year, and your answer was sort of still, the jury's out on whether or not that's going to result in, you know, a material increase in our enrollment. Is that still your position?
Yeah, I think it's, I just don't think there's enough, I just can't get a good feel for that. You know, we just started trying to, because of the law change with the state, you know, we were not even tracking or forecasting pre-K from a company until like two years ago, so it's kind of new to us, and there's so, there's no, it's not like a, you know, when you're looking at a second grade, you can look at the first grade and kind of get an idea of what's going on there, but we don't really have that same trends to look at. Typically, in the districts that we've seen that have gone to full day, you know, they have seen some, a little bump at kindergarten, but we haven't seen that enough to know what's causing it. And so I really don't feel like I could, you know, help too much on that.
Okay. Sort of relatedly, there's, you know, in the chart that you, that shows the, sort of the grid, there's a highlight for grades, I think it's eight and nine, maybe it's nine and 10.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, nine and 10. And does it seem, is this just sort of churn where we have a jump in ninth graders, and then some of them, they don't become sophomores, or are we seeing some sort of actual enrollment jump from eight to nine of people coming either back to the system or to the system for the first time?
Right. So I wish I, I'm sorry, I didn't kind of talk to that a little bit. So those are your two largest classes in any, they just happen to be lined up for Arlington, but that, your largest class is ninth grade, your second largest is 10th grade. What we've always said is that we kind of consider that ninth grade class your freshmoors. There's a lot of students that don't quite have enough credit, so we see that really high cohort at ninth grade everywhere we go. So it's such a high cohort, then the next year it drops off because those 10th graders are in the ninth grade. So we see that trend just about everywhere where we go. What's unusual is that 10th grade is your second biggest class, because usually, we see the biggest class at ninth grade just about everywhere we go, and then it's somewhere in your secondary, your sixth, seventh grade, something like that would be your biggest class, or in the real fast growth days, your kindergarten or first grade. So it's just kind of an unusual anomaly there, but those cohorts are very much what we see everywhere, that trend.
And I think, I guess what I'm interested is from this data, do you have an opinion on whether or not, you know, we substantially build out our academic programs, we've done a lot of that across the board, but, you know, public schools typically have pretty robust offerings in high school, and, you know, we very much do from our Career Tech Center to Fine Arts and so on. A lot of the, you know, I think, my sense is that a lot of our enrollment drop from the last several years is due to the growth of charter schools and some private, some homeschool, but a lot of those programs only are K6 to K8. So I think one of the ways, one of the things I'm interested in is, are we recapturing some of those folks for grade nine for the opportunities that we offer, or is that not something that you can tell from the state?
I don't, yeah, I can't really tell that from this, but we do have, and I'll make a note to look at this. We do, because we track those student IDs, we can look and see if a student ID returns, you know, if it was, if it leaves your school three years ago and comes back two years later, that's something we can look at.
Okay.
Because I haven't done that before, and, yeah, I do think charter schools have been important, and that's why I mentioned that seventh grade class. I think they're coming back even earlier in a lot of cases. I think, and we're seeing that in a lot of areas, that charter schools have a little bit trouble holding on for those middle school grades, just what they offer gets a little tougher.
Yeah. So the first, you know, just to put some, like a ballpark to it, we went down and testified against a charter school for the first time back in June, and for the first time, I was given some data, I believe it came from TASSA, that estimated that we had, that Arlington ISD was losing about 7,500 kids a year to charters. Is there, have you seen any data like that? Is that something you've ever looked at?
Well, it's interesting you should ask. We are now working with a group that can kind of, it's a really neat new technology, and they're going in, and they're tracking devices. So we can tell how many, you know, where these devices are at home, and it sounds like a little big brother, and see if they're, if they've left your, you know, we can see what's happening with those devices, and that's kind of what we're using. We've now mapped, actually, I can get that, too. We've now received a map of where all the charter school students live based on these devices, and I can share, I can share that with you guys, too. I think it'll be, it's getting interesting, it really is.
Okay. I, a question on the, when you talk about yields from, in particular apartment complexes, is the yield, the number of school-aged students that come from that apartment complex total, or is it the yield of students who are school-aged who come to AISD?
Yeah, we're only talking about Arlington ISD students. We don't really know what, you know, so whether it's single-family or multifamily, those yields are specific to Arlington ISD. So if I said Arlington ISD had a .4 yield, you know, four students for every 10 homes, that'd be four Arlington students for every 10 homes.
Okay.
When in reality, there could be six.
So is it, is it possible, does the data exist, that would say for this neighborhood, for this larger apartment complex, the actual school-aged population is X and your yield is Y, and there's a delta there that we know that we, we're missing some of that population?
That's what we're working to figure out, using some of these same methods, but right now, we do not have that.
Okay. And then I think my last question, and this is, you know, tenure projections are, I mean, they're sort of a, they're sort of an art. There's so many variables in play here, but I guess my question would be, I was on, before I was on the board, I was on the 1314 Capital Needs Steering Committee that put together the 14 bond for this district.
The 2014?
The 2014 bond. And the demographic projections that were given to us then projected that by this time, we would have almost 70,000 students, 69,000, 70,000 students. And so what do you think are the main drivers of why we didn't see that? And then looking into, you know, I know you've got data and numbers that produce this build out. Is there anything that you don't, that maybe this doesn't take into account that is in the back of your, you know, sort of at the back of your mind of watch out for this thing over the next 10 years, because this could make an actual, you know, a difference one way or the other, make the decline sharper, maybe see more of an enrollment rebound than you're expecting, because I anticipate that we're going to be asked to make some very serious decisions as a board, given the school finance environment, given these changes in our, you know, our enrollment footprint over the next five to eight years. That will depend heavily on what we think our district is going to look like, and so I worry a lot about, we built our 14 bond around a district that never came to be, and so I worry about doing that again.
All right, I understand. And actually, I was probably, I probably built that forecast. But, yeah, since that time, back in 2014, the yields were .6, .65 probably, you know, in Arlington, they were pretty, what we would call normal yields, .6 to .7 was pretty standard. And then yields began, the regeneration in Arlington didn't happen, like, you know, people didn't move out and move in, and then, of course, then charges began to hit, you know, six or seven years later, we started hitting charters. So every time, we started seeing those negatives, and then we started seeing a couple of schools started open enrollment. I can think of one specifically that went really big, fast, and they captured a couple thousand Arlington students as well. So there were, some of those things happened. The big question is now is, and we are working with three or four clients right now that are having to, you know, repurpose some schools. And the question is, yeah, is the regeneration, you know, we don't want to do that, then have regeneration occur, right? And then you're caught with schools that are too small. And there's so many things happening now. I do think a new trend has evolved from COVID, you know, that we have these homeschool pods, and there's, you know, there's going to be the discussion of vouchers, which is going to be a whole nother thing that we're going to have to learn what that impact is. So do I think I would ever see a forecast back to, I think 50,000, 51,000 would be great if we can hold on to that. I don't see a scenario where it just kind of all of a sudden totally regenerates. I just don't see that scenario anymore. But I do think that it's possible to stay at that 50,000.
Okay.
Stem this, but that's about all I can really, I think there's so many things going on right now that public schools are kind of battling against.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, public schools only grew 12,000 students, and just to put that in perspective, charter schools grew 18,000. So actually, public schools lost 6,000 students last year, and that's, you know, that's, that was the first time. So that's, so in one year doesn't make a trend, but it's sure kind of scary.
Yeah, we, and that's interesting. I was thinking, as you were talking, I was thinking about, we had a presentation at the North Texas Area Association of School Boards back in this, I think it was earlier this semester or late last spring, and that was pretty surprising, is that it might have been you, it might have been another demographer.
Bob did it, yeah.
Okay, and it put up a map of DFW that was color-coded, and we're not unique. You're seeing a drain of students from the older suburban urban core of DFW. That color was negative, and then all around us were these fast-growth districts that were green and growing, but when you looked at the statewide trends, it was a very low overall, that was happening all over the state.
Yes, it was.
And so the overall growth in public school students was very low, even though it looked like we have all these growing districts around us.
Right, yeah.
That was pretty fascinating.
Yeah.
Dr. Smith?
You can keep going.
Oh. Mr. Will Banks, you have comments, questions?
I wanted to ask Rocky, just to clarify the levers slide again. I want to make sure that the board knows and understands what Rocky mentioned on the levers slide. There we go, on that one, just so you know what goes into that number on the teal side and what goes into that number on the purple side, because I think that will be an important piece for this discussion.
Do you want me to repeat that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the teal slide, the levers, are student IDs that were in the district the previous year and are not in the district that, okay, so that's what, that's really what that is. So they, we don't have their student ID. That doesn't mean they've left the district necessarily, but they've definitely left Arlington ISD. And the newcomer, the purple is just the opposite of that. So, and keep in mind, the levers, again, we don't count 12 squares as levers. So, and the purple is just the opposite of that. Last year, that student ID wasn't in your district and this year there is. Now, what I mentioned too, which, which I need, I might need to be reminded by Kelly or someone later, but we could just go back and see if that newcomer wasn't in, that student ID was there two or three years ago and see if they've returned something like that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the key thing for us is that number, the teal number includes seniors that graduate.
It does not include seniors.
It does not include.
No, it does not include 12.
I thought I heard you the other way around.
No, the levers does not include seniors.
Perfect, thank you.
Newcomers does.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have Mr. Will Banks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Chapa and Dr. Smith. That was a perfect segue to my question because it was about this slide. I would very much be interested in seeing what the number is of returners in addition to the levers and the newcomers on this slide. And then my question is more to Dr. Smith and his district and other districts he's worked at, as well as the current practices that we have here in Arlington ISD. What do we do in terms of surveying and doing, digging deeper to find out the root causes of why someone's decided to leave Arlington ISD? Do we have a good handle on how many actually did leave to go to a charter school or homeschool or go to one of those districts that Rocky mentioned that did a really good job of recruiting our students?
Couple of things, yes. We're starting to work on that this year. We actually have a partnership to try and figure out if we can locate our levers. That's a little hard to do sometimes, but we're working on locating our levers and then being able to ask the levers some specific questions about what reasons that they left Arlington ISD, to dive deeper into that. If it is, we moved to another district and we're out of the area, that's one thing. If they're still in the same home and they've chosen to go to another place, that's a whole nother thing. And we want to get at the root cause of those that are choosing something else other than Arlington ISD. So we're working on that for the first time this year. Second thing, I think Rocky is going to be working on some additional data for us and we're going to do some cross referencing specific on charter school enrollment to the best of our ability from our data sets at the state.
Perfect.
Just a sticky note to write that down, too.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mr. Mike?
There we go, it's on. So, yeah, Mr. Will Banks brought up something that popped into my mind with regards to this slide, the newcomers and the levers and getting that additional information. When I look at this tenure forecast by the elementary campuses, 17 and 18, I notice that some of these elementaries are busting at the seams. We see the functional capacity of certain ones and then the design capacity, for instance, Thornton Elementary, they're 59 away from reaching the design capacity. So, and then I noticed that on the construction of any new housing in the Thornton area, there's nothing. And so I wonder if the breakdown of that newcomers versus levers, if it's able to break down how many newcomers per elementary school area?
We can.
Okay.
We could do, we could do that. I don't have it right now, but we could definitely do that.
Yeah, because it, you know, just looking at this and looking at certain ones, it's, I think Thornton wasn't built too long ago. And now they're, they're at a point where it's, they're busting at the seams. So I wonder how the trends play with regards to where people are moving in the city and how that affects.
Some regeneration, stuff that might be occurring there. Yes, yeah, we can look at that, too. We'll look at that near levers by area.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mike. I have no other requesters. Ms. Richardson, do you have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just make a quick announcement. It looks like we have a large number of students here tonight who I think need to get documented proof of being with the trustee to get credit for certain classes. All of you in McDaniel's class at Martin?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we will move on to our next two reports and then we will take a recess after reports before we go to action items, okay? All right, our next report tonight is our TRS Active Care Report. Dr. Smith?
I honestly thought they were just here to hear our presentations. I thought they were excited about that. I'd like to welcome Holly Stanbaugh up tonight. Holly works in our HR department. Scott Cale, I think, might be coming up as well. There he is. I couldn't see him back there, I thought he'd left. But they're going to give us a report on TRS Active Care is our health insurance, insurance that we provide for our employees and we've been studying some things. Holly?
Thank you. Thank you, President Chapa, trustees and Dr. Smith for having me here today and Mr. Cale. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide feedback regarding our Arlington ISD healthcare plans and also information about TRS Active Care plan alternatives. And at the conclusion of the presentation, Mr. Cale is going to come up and speak to you as well. But the Board of Trustees may consider opting out or remaining in TRS Active Care for the 2526 plan year. And I'll speak to a little bit about what that means here in a few minutes. So right now, TRS Active Care has about 4,600 employees enrolled, but we have about 8,000 employees in the district approximately. And so you can see here, there's kind of a downward trend in our enrollees from 2020 to have 5,022 enrolled to this year having 4,600 enrolled. And I'll, I want to point out that we have 2,600 employees who actually declined coverage. And we surveyed them and I'll speak to that here in a few minutes. But we also had about 800 who opted out. So we have over 3,000 employees that don't have coverage here with Arlington ISD. So the district has some considerations on TRS Active Care. And if the district continues to review healthcare alternatives to TRS that may provide lower premiums and out of pocket expenses to employees, and those are some things that we've been doing carefully. If the district, if the TRS Active Care does not receive funding during the 2025 legislative process, then multiple districts could choose to elect to leave all at once. And if they do, that could cause carrier availability amongst all the plans in this area. And so we have to continue to evaluate several things, such as future rates of TRS Active Care, and those are unknown right now. We won't see those rates until May, could be June, and with the legislative year, it could be towards the end of June. Typically, it's around May. And then withdrawals of other districts from TRS Active Care, they, you know, how that would impact our market. And so the opt-out deadlines are every December. And so when I go back to that last slide, we won't know those rates until May or June, but they give us until 1231 of each school year to opt out. And so that's why we're here today, because we're approaching 1231 pretty quick. And then if TRS, if districts who opt out, TRS does not allow you to re-enter for five years. So it's a, you know, very challenging decision because we don't see those rates until later, but we have to make a decision, you know, several months in advance. AISD is part of Region 11, which is a high claims cost region. About two or three years ago, they ended up putting districts in regions based on claims. And so you'll see different regions in the state, their premiums are a little different based on their claims. And so Region 11 as a whole is a high claims cost region. And so some things we have to consider, if TRS rates go up about 10 to 15% in the next enrollment period, which would be in September of 2025, and the district had not made a change by December 31 of 2024, that the district's future ability to opt out would not be in effect until September of 2026. So rates are released again around May of each school year. It could be a little different this year with the legislative, the legislative year coming up. And then a decision to opt out would be made without access to those rates. I will share with you that TRS Active Care has submitted a legislative appropriation request for about $450 million, and that's to keep about a 10% rate increase. So if they get $450 million, we're probably going to see about a 10% rate increase. But it's been shared with me that the true need is actually a billion dollars. I want to share some claims data with you because it's important and there's some trends here that I'll point out in a minute. But for an insurance model to be sustainable, it must balance premiums collected with the claims paid. And so we're not collecting enough premiums on the claims that we're paying, and that's a challenge. And so, but a good thing is, is we see that there's a downward trend and we believe that's because of our promoting of wellness. We have a wellness champ at every campus and they're essential in our promoting wellness amongst the district. And we believe that part of these decrease in these loss ratio is our continued efforts. And right now, we're at 108%. And I will share with you, we're not able to pull that data but twice a year. So we just pulled it recently and we'll repull it again later this spring. So there's some path to reduce claims and I spoke about wellness. And so our population is making progress, but it does take time. We want to create a healthy population and in doing that, we hope that will help reduce claims overall. We understand that there's some things that are just not in our control, but the more we promote that, we do, we do feel like we'll see some, some changes there. We want to reduce the number of unscheduled sick days, you know, when you're wealth, when you're healthy, you're at work, and we want people to be healthy and at work. We want to empower employees to take ownership of their personal health. As y'all are all aware, we have the new wellness program through Vitality and we're really pushing to get that going and it seems to be, you know, really well. But we want, we want employees to get on to Vitality and so we're promoting that amongst all of our employees in addition to our medically enrolled. And then we want to reduce specific conditions such as stress, tobacco cessation, high blood pressure and et cetera. So one thing that we can do as well is consider one healthcare provider system to leverage purchasing power and decrease rates, such as example, a Texas Health Resources or a Methodist. Those are just examples. And this may utilize a self-insured model for the district providing plan flexibility. It also may help other plan cost efficiency guidelines. We want, we could have a health plan participation, may include a requirement for our employees to participate in wellness. And again, these are just examples of what we could do with a one healthcare provider system. We may also include requirements to follow up on medical provided recommendations, such as lowering body mass index and smoking cessation. Those are things that we wouldn't have access to, but our partner with Vitality could help us set up plans to have ways to reduce those things. Employee care limited to the adopted designated healthcare system, so out of network, we could set to where it's medical necessity or emergency. Again, these are just options that we have with a self, you know, a self-insured model. Employees who currently utilize other healthcare would be required to transition providers. So if we were to create a model here and they're with a doctor outside of that, they would have to switch doctors. And we are conscientious of that as well. Cost projections, such as premiums and contract assurance for the five-year TRS opt-out are critical. So in our considerations, we need to look for a provider where we can see that those rates are guaranteed or assured for that five-year period. So we've been doing some stakeholder feedback the past few months and we surveyed the 2,600 employees who declined medical coverage. We surveyed the healthcare steering committee. We surveyed our district wellness champs. And we also surveyed employee groups such as the principals, campus and, campus and department staffs, and also representatives from UEA. And I've got some information to share regarding those surveys next. So the 2,600 employees who declined coverage, we asked them, what is your main reason you elected not to participate in medical coverage? And you can see 49.9% said they have coverage through spouse or partner, 17% said they can't afford the premiums and they have no coverage, and 16% said they can't afford and have premiums elsewhere. But I want to point out that that's about three quarters of the 2,600 have no coverage, have coverage elsewhere, or they can't afford it. And what that tells me is that they can't, the 49% or 50%, they're on their spouses because they can't afford ours. So we've got a large group that find our insurance infordable. So out of the 2,600 employees who declined, we asked them if an alternative coverage could be offered, which would be your primary reason in the decision-making process to choose to enroll in an Arlington ISD medical plan? And it was, you know, resounding, the lower premiums was what they were suggesting. So we also surveyed our healthcare steering committee and I pointed out that this was a slide, the first, this was a slide-o ranking poll on the first. So when you see, it says, again, they're, the top ranking was, they want lower medical premium costs. We asked them the same question. What is the most important factor that the district should consider when deciding to leave or not leave TRS Active Care? And they said lower medical premium costs. And you're going to see the same trend as I continue through the presentation. And we asked them, we asked, it was 47 votes, and we asked them, based on the information we presented in that meeting, was there, is there recommendation that Arlington ISD should remain in TRS Active Care or consider switching to an alternative for the 2526? And 45 said consider switching and two said remain. We surveyed our wellness champs and again, our wellness champ is an ambassador and a resource to us here in the district and they help us promote culture for our wellness. And we asked them, in your opinion, would, would most employees be interested in an alternative healthcare plan if it meant lower premium, even if it resulted in a change to network and providers? And 83% said yes. Again, we asked them, in your opinion, what is the most important factors the district should consider when deciding to leave or not leave TRS Active Care? And most important was lower medical premiums. We surveyed campus and department staff and we asked them, would you consider an alternative healthcare plan with lower premium costs, even if it meant involving changing your network and available physicians? 79% said yes. And 20, about 21% said no. Based, and then again, based on the healthcare presentation that we shared with them, what course of action would you recommend AISD pursue? And they said consider switching. 83.4% said consider switching with TRS Active Care to an alternative medical plan option for 2425, I'm sorry, 2526. And then 16% said remain with TRS Active Care. We also surveyed the United Educators Association and we did this through a thought exchange. And so we asked them, you know, what was their, we asked them the one question, would they consider remaining or leaving TRS Active Care? And their respondents, it says, several respondents expressed concerns about the high cost and increasing premiums of TRS Active Care, suggesting a switch to a more cost-effective plan. Some emphasized the need for lower rates and deductibles, while other highlighted the disparity between premium increases and pay raises. However, one respondent recommended staying with TRS Active Care due to perceived risk of switching providers. And so you can see the star score and these are responses that were starred by the other employees based on the greatest importance to the employees surveyed. And it starts with cost effective insurance, insurance expenses, switching insurance to lower costs, to rate reduction, and then a risk of switching, and then TRS recommendation. Okay, so I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Cale, who's going to go over conclusions, considerations and recommendations.
Good evening, President Chapa, board members and Dr. Smith. And I very much appreciate the effort and work Holly's put into this, particularly making sure that we heard the voice of our employees. And as I've made presentations at some of these groups, I've, I've said what I'm about to mention repeatedly, which is I think that the decision of whether to stay in or to leave TRS Active Care is one that should be made collectively by the members who participate in it. I don't think it's an administrative decision per se. I think it's a decision that affects members and their voice should be the loudest in that decision. And that's why we wanted to make sure we heard what they had to say. So I'm going to take what I recognize as a relatively complex set of information and I'm going to try and boil it down as best I can to show you what I think we heard and what I think it means and where I believe we can go next to meet the needs of our, of our employees. So the consensus of our employees and their input across the surveys that you just saw indicates that cost is obviously their primary concern. Employees expressed an interest in consideration of alternative plans of TRS Active Care. That is different. You know, we've done this for a few years and there seems to have been a little bit of a movement in that perception. It was not nearly as strong in the past years as it was at this, this round of surveys this year. Leveraging one healthcare system in a self-funded plan has the potential to provide more stable or lower premiums. What's the, the interpretation of that is, you know, I've talked to a lot of people who believe, and I understand it's a complicated subject, but they believe that, you know, if you're with an Aetna, maybe you go to a Blue Cross. If you're with a Blue Cross, maybe you go to, go to a United Healthcare. And in reality, those, those companies, while they do provide full insurance, they're typically third-party administrators that are administering the claims on behalf of a self- third party administrators that are administering the claims on behalf of a self funded plan, like Holly mentioned. And you're really going to get about the same rate, maybe a little bit incentive to start with them. If you think about your car insurance, your car insurance is based on actuarial information. It's based on what's your age, what's your risk factor, how many, how many accidents or, or, or other issues have you had? And if you go to another carrier, you might get something a little better at first, but effectively that rate is being built off of that data. It's very similar for healthcare. So when you think, okay, what can we do to actually lower this and in a meaningful way? It's reasonable to believe it'll have an impact. And the, one of the two things that we've mentioned today is to actually leverage one healthcare system. And what I was concerned about when we first put this out there was whether or not that would be attractive to our employee base, because that means in some cases that employees would have to change their provider, that they've been with a doctor for X number of years in a different system and now they'd have to change. It was interesting, after our presentations, we tried to be as transparent about that information as possible. You saw the results, that that, that potential to change will still is something people think about, not nearly the hurdle that it had been in the past. And in fact, there's no question that if you leverage one provider, and I do not mean one hospital or one doctor, I'm talking about a THR system as opposed to a Baylor system as opposed to an MCA system. A self funded plan, which is really what it looks like our alternative would be and everything that that means, has pros and cons in terms of being a workable alternative. It gives us district feasibility to design our own plan. We, you can put things in the plan that today might not be digestible to other districts within TRS. And so therefore TRS is trying to meet the needs of a lot of different customers. If we had our own plan, we'd have that flexibility to determine what made sense for Arlington ISD in terms of cost containment strategies. At the same time, it assumes the financial responsibility for the plan on the part of the district. That's not quite as scary as it sounds because there's, there is such an entity or a thing called stop loss coverage. So you make sure that you don't have a lot of exposure. But those, those elements are important to consider when you're looking at, is it the right thing to do to go off and, and seek another plan, especially if it's self funded? There are several districts that do that today. Opting out of TRS active care requires that the district be on an independent plan, as Holly mentioned, for at least five years. We don't want to be in a situation where we get out, realize that somebody incentivized, incentivized us to join or incentivized us to make a certain decision. And then we're out for four more years and our rates go up and, and that's a problem. So we don't currently have a commitment from a particular carrier that says, hey, here's what we're going to give you for rate caps, or we're going to keep it stable. But we are actually working on that and I'll talk to that in just a moment a little bit more. State statute, as I mentioned, requires we get out by 1231 every year if we're going to get out. The challenge that creates when it comes to insurance is that there are almost, I can't think of any examples where someone is an actuarial will say, sure, give me, give me data on claims experience from nine, 10, 12, 14 months ago, and I'll give you, I'll give you a rate going forward. They want much more current data. So the way the statute was actually enacted creates challenges for us because you're using older data to make a decision, as Holly mentioned, all the way, we're making a decision today for a rate plan that wouldn't go into effect until September of 2025. We recommend using the 24, 25 school year to model the cost impact of a self funded plan had the district opted out by 1231. So here's what I mean. I, I've thought about this a lot. I've, I've worked on this a lot, as has Holly. And I think we may have a solution. When you take everything that you've heard tonight, what I think you heard is that our employees are weary of the cost of TRS active care. Despite, I, I want to give TRS active care credit. I, I do believe they're making every effort, but they have a large challenge in healthcare in general, as well as serving multiple districts with multiple interests and, and needs. And how we can go about this, understanding that, that issue that we have to make a decision on 1231 for a plan that isn't effective until September of the following year, is I would suggest that we actually model as though we'd gotten out rather than get out. So what I mean by that is when we get to April and May of next year, not having gotten out now, we're going to have that data. And it's almost like being able to say, well, what would have happened? You take the actual current model, excuse me, the current healthcare claims data for Arlington ISD in the April, May timeframe. You use the, the strategy that we're talking about as we're working with benefits consultants to be our points of contact with, whether it be THR or Baylor. You, you get proposals, not contracts. And you actually have a look at, had we gotten out, this is what it would have looked like. This is what the rates would have been. This is what the plan design would have been. And while we're not going to sign contracts because you're going to want to go through an actual RFP and do it appropriately, you have a very clear picture as opposed to the foggy picture that we have with this time delay. And in doing that, you can actually then go back to employees in the September, October timeframe and say, here's what it would have looked like this year had we got out last year. Here's what the plan would have looked like. Here's what the cost would have looked like. Here's what the design differences would have looked like. Here's what the coverage would have looked like in terms of, excuse me, where the providers are that you can go to see. It also includes other elements like making sure that you really do have, if you're going self insured, that you have a coverage should you go above that max and protecting the district. So there's a lot of things that need to be nailed down and I think we can do that by modeling them in the next nine months and then using that data to show employees, taking that employee feedback and coming back to you a year from now. I feel challenged because I feel that the employees have told us they're tired and they're weary of the cost. But I also feel responsible not to make a premature decision that's one that we can't fix because we're out for five years. I'd like to have everything nailed down and I think modeling gives us the opportunity to do that. So subsequently with that, I would propose that we construct a self funded proposal, including a potential five year agreement, working with the consultants that we're currently working with, that'll inform a subsequent recommendation effectively a year from today. And I think that concludes the presentation. I very much appreciate the time and I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cale, Ms. Danba. Ms. Richardson had requested in advance that she's interested in this topic and would like to ask questions. So I'll go to her first this time. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you for the thorough presentation from all, each of you. I appreciate it. I feel that as we've listened to the teachers' voices, we've heard they're weary. And I know that you are too as well, that you have reached, researched this over and over to figure out what is the best option. I have multiple questions, so if you'll bear with me as we look at this together. Can we go on slide five? It was quoted, if I read correctly, if TRS rates increase by 10 or 15%? Is that's one of the stats that was given to us? Slide five. It's on the TRS opt out deadline and updates. Oh, go back. There you go. Bullet point four, five. If TRS rates go up by 10 to 15% in the next enrollment period, yada, yada. Do we know how much that would be per employee possibly?
Well, employee, employee premiums will vary based on what coverage they have, if they're, if they're covering themselves as an individual, if they're covering themselves as a family, if they're covering themselves as a spouse. We also make a slightly higher contribution as a district to premiums for employees that are non exempt versus those that are salaried. So it, it, it's a percentage from our current rate structure. And I'll be happy to get you a copy of that after, after the presentation if you'd like.
Thank you. As we look through everything that we read about TRS, it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like the deadline that they set up is meant to be difficult. Would you say that's correct?
I think there, there was a lot of give and take that occurred when the legislative change took place to allow any district to get out because, because until recently, we weren't able to get out at all. And I think the outcome of that give and take had some significant compromises in it. That's what I would say.
Would you say that's intentionally made it difficult to exit though for districts?
Does it make it difficult for districts to exit? Absolutely. I, I can't say that there was a purposeful, willful individual choice to make it difficult. The outcome certainly makes it difficult.
Yeah. As we read everything coming out about TRS, it seems like one of the only known factors that we basically can guarantee and a whole lot of unknowns is that TRS rates continue to increase. We know that with the raises that we are able to give with our budget, the feedback from teachers, our raises are never going to be able to compensate for the amount of the way that insurance premiums are rising and going up. So our teachers are feeling it more and more. I was looking on another slide, towards the back. Mr. Cale, slide 15. Inclusions, considerations, and recommendations. You mentioned, and you named some specific ones, healthcare systems that you would leverage possibly. Could you restate what some of those might be?
Sure. So when I refer to healthcare systems, I'm referring to the large macro system. I'm referring to the THR system. I'm referring to the Baylor system. Those are two primary examples, particularly to the extent that both of those systems have a, have a high footprint in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And so you're not limiting employees. Well, it may or may not be a system that the employee currently uses. There's, there's a lot of availability of specialists and hospitals and, and other care providers where it's not a challenge and a limitation in terms of employees being able to get access to care. But we're talking about the macro system. We're talking about a Baylor versus a THR.
Okay. Are there ways that we could minimize our costs if we were self funded, self insured?
Yes. So that, that's one of the leverage points. So if you're self insured, you could actually come to an agreement with one of those systems that gave you pricing that, that was advantageous to the extent that you would say, we're going to only direct our members to your system, not to any other system, short of an emergency or something like that, obviously. But with that, with that guarantee on the part of the organization, I have a high level of assurance based on the conversations I've been in, that yes, that would give us a reduction.
One of the things that I struggle with is the demands that TRS places on us. For example, the, we, we, if we get out, then we can't come back for five years. That is one of their rules that they have. But they also want to give us a five year commitment for premiums, right? I'm sorry, they will not give us a five year commitment for premiums. But yet, when we go out and we ask other companies, what could you do? What could you do? No one else can give us five year quote, but neither can TRS. How are we able to leverage and see and make it an active playing field? It seems like the data we're giving, especially with TRS, that it doesn't, that it's made for us to fail.
So there were, there were a few things in there, Ms. Richardson. the, the difference in the size of systems, right? The size and scope of the TRS healthcare system is, is huge, one of the largest in the nation. And so with that, whether TRS is managing that population or anybody else, that is a different animal in terms of managing something of that size and scope. And the projection of cost is challenging because you've got so many different players contributing to the claims and to the wellness or lack of wellness that it's going to impact, it's going to impact your ultimate costs and therefore your premiums in subsequent years. And I can only imagine the challenge in predicting that from year to year. So I understand why they're not really able to project, especially from an actuarial perspective, more than, you know, a few months in advance. It's that same challenge that we have, what, even though it'd be a smaller system with one district, to be able to project costs and therefore premiums. And the actuaries and the insurance companies, they really want data within three to four months, maybe at most, before the, before the plan takes place. And you can't do that if your plan starts on September 1st and you've got to make a decision by the prior December 31st. That's the legislative challenge, the way it was written, that does create problems. But the recommendation that I've made is that I think there's a way to get there from here. I think that by modeling the data, even though it will be a model, even though things can happen in a year, I can tell you, watching the data from year to year, it's relatively stable. It shows some growth every year in cost, but I haven't seen any large anomalies. And so you're going to have a high level of assurance, in my opinion, by modeling, okay, if we'd gotten out, now that we're closer, we have the data, what would it have been like? What would the cost have been? And therefore, how does that translate to premiums? And I think that that is actually probably the most conservative way we can go about understanding if this is a good decision for employees before we make it. And, and it's what I would recommend.
I appreciate the fact, the research that you and your team put into this, by the fact that it went to the steering committee, the wellness champs, campus and department staff, that you did a thought exchange with UEA. One of the things that you said at the end, when you were speaking was that this shouldn't be a decision for administration. It needs to be a decision made by the staff because it directly affects them. It makes me uncomfortable to make a decision based, for someone else's healthcare. I wouldn't want somebody to do that for mine. And so to know that you are putting all the work in, I want to make sure that as much as we are soliciting opinions and hearing their voices, that we also then act on the voices and the opinions that are being given to us. And if that means we need to wait one more year for you to feel confident and for your team to feel confident, I understand that because I do think you have their best interests at heart. I just want to make sure at the end of the day, we do more than just listen to them.
Yep, completely agree.
Thank you for, thank you for all the research and thank you for all the answers that you gave me.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next, we have Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Mr. Cale, Ms. Danba. Quick question. We were talking about the robust research y'all have done. Are you in communication with any districts that have already opted out?
So we haven't talked thoroughly. I, I'm aware of which districts have opted out and I know some have doubled back on their decisions, depending on which district we're talking and what they went to. Some went to consortiums that were not successful and they had to make other choices. Some went to self insured and have since changed path and gone to fully insured. And so I'm aware of them. I haven't talked deeply with, with them as that hasn't been where we're at. I think that's something we would do in this coming year. For example, I'm aware of a district that is using the, the model of what one of our consultants has recommended and it's a lot in the weeds. So, and Ms. Richardson, I'll, I'll spare you right now, but knowing that one particular district has already gone there, we're going to spend a significant amount of time on the phone and maybe not even in person, understanding what's working, what, what were they concerned about? Have any of those concerns come to fruition?
I think that's great to hear. Last night, this is really timely because some of us were at the North Texas Area Association of School Boards meeting and this was a hot topic. They, a lot of local trustees and some of the folks that were there from TASB Governmental Relations were saying that this may have some traction this session. And I know that no funding is guaranteed, as your slide mentioned, but the question that's getting traction already is why don't public school educators have access to the same health insurance options as other government employees? And that's kind of what's going to drive those conversations in this session. And I thought it was very interesting because I, I didn't know this, but several North Texas area school districts have already opted out and they were pretty vocal last night, expressing their woes in that not only is it that the providers have changed in many cases, that's not the big problem. The big problem is they have found that the rates are just as expensive.
Yes.
And now they can't opt back in.
Right.
For five years.
Yes.
And so that, to me, is a key concern. It's a key concern and it's something that was really eye opening to me last night. So this is not off topic, but it is a different item in our agenda. But I do want to note that this is the reason why we are adding it. We're hopefully adding it into our legislative agenda. We want our legislators to increase access to affordable health insurance options for our public school employees. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Chapa and Vice President McMurro. I wholeheartedly concur. We need, it is unf-. We need, it is unfathomable to me that a state employee gets awesome insurance and hardly any benefit, any burdens to those families that are insured through those plans, but yet our teachers get a subpar benefit plan through TRS Active Care at a much, much greater cost. So I am all in favor of adding that to our legislative agenda. And my question to you, Mr. Cale, was similar to Ms. McMurro's, is, you know, first of all, being very clear, going, the path forward before we were looking at possibly doing our, looking at a third party, like an ETNA or et cetera, and/or, or doing self-funded. And at this point, we're looking at staying in or doing self-funded, correct?
I think our option this year is to stay in or to go out. If we go out, it would be self-funded, yes.
I'm talking about assuming we, we decide to model and then go out next year.
Right. So self-funded appears to be the best option, understanding that's the difference between what Ms. McMurro brought up with some districts that have been unsuccessful. There has to be something built into the strategy that actually has a path to reduce cost. And there's, there's two, real quick. One is wellness. And on slide six, when we went through the presentation, you can see that our wellness as a district has continued to go down. That will make us more attractive as a customer for any insurance company. And if we keep in that direction, it's going to help this effort. The second one is leverage one particular system and give that system our business without restricting employees' ability to get care because it's a large system. You put those two things together, and I think there's a real capacity for a self-funded program to show sustainably reduced cost.
Yeah. As a consultant, one of my clients about 10 years ago, my costs for my family were going up and up and up and up. And the client was on a self-funded plan for their employees and offered to, quote, "make me an employee" so I'd be eligible for that plan. And my, our cost as a family went down considerably. It was a great plan, no complaints, great access to providers. So I'm, you know, I have no qualms with a self-funded plan. But my question was very similar to Ms. McMurro's, and what are we doing, looking at those districts that are on, kind of on the bleeding edge of jumping into this new world of, of leaving TRS Active Care? And how many were doing, you said very few were doing a self-funded plan or?
There's a handful that are currently doing self-funded plans.
Yeah. And yeah, I'm really interested in learning of what challenges they've run into and what those, how they were able to capture those known unknowns, but more importantly, those unknown unknowns, when going into a whole new area like jumping ship and going to an unfunded, or a self-funded plan. So the more we can open those dialogues with those districts that have kind of forged ahead of us and learn from them, the better because it's all about mitigating risk. And I also will echo Ms. Richardson's comments about letting the employees lead in this decision. On slide 14, when you pulled, so in one of the surveys, I think you had 45 respondents. And that, and just to be clear, that was sent out to that group of 2,600 employees that did not have coverage? Or was that sent to all employees?
Do you know which slide you're on, Mr. Will Banks?
I was looking for it. So there's the one with the bar charts, or no?
So, so we entered, we surveyed a number of people. We surveyed the UEA membership meeting, probably, I don't know the exact number, there were probably 45 to 50 people in that room. We, we surveyed, and that was a thought exchange, that was the bar chart on slide 14. We, we surveyed our wellness champions, which is a representation of our campuses. There's one at each campus, so about 75, 76 people. We surveyed our principals, and we also sent out surveys trying to understand why people who chose not to be in our, in our healthcare plan, they gave us feedback about when they opted out and opened enrollment.
Yeah. I'd like to see the, the percentage of responders to the population that we were trying to survey on those, just to make sure we had a good enough, large enough sample number in our surveys to know that we're truly represented. And on those, for instance, it, I'd be curious, you know, it sounds like we've got a wide spectrum because I'd like to make sure that we surveyed enough hourly employees, teachers, paraprofessionals, and bus drivers, principals, central admin staff, just to make sure that we've got a good representation of all of our employees.
Sure. I, I think we have, but we'll be happy to share that information with you.
I think if we take a look, I think you can see the number of respondents on those pie charts, et cetera. And I believe that was your 2,600 that was sent out. Was that correct?
Yes.
And so I think some of the respondents on there were 260 or so respondents, so we're talking about a 10% return rate on that. I think that's in your, in the slides, if I'm not mistaken. Scott, we scroll back a couple of slides, I think that if you showed the, the bar charts, I believe I saw.
I saw it somewhere.
Go back one. Your, your pie charts, 336 responses were submitted on that one. You can see it right there under the question.
Oh, there it is, and real small. Okay. And then on the wellness champs, that was, the reason why it was 18 responses is, okay, that's, that's the number I saw previously, then I thought, well, that number's pretty low. But that's because those wellness champs, there's one at every campus, right?
There is, yes, sir.
Okay. So that was probably a significant number of, a significant sample.
Yep.
Okay. And the only other comment I'll say is, I support taking a year, modeling it out, and trying to reduce those known unknowns so that we'll be in a much better shape to ensure our employees that we're making the right decision on their behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. I do appreciate that you've reached out to the employees and asked them what their, what their choices are and what they would like to do. I think that's very important. Would we have any, if this is the right term, buying leverage? If we had more districts that would join with us, would we get any better rates if there were, you know, six large districts rather than just us?
Yeah, it's a great, a great question, Ms. Fowler. It, it actually is a, it's a trade-off. So on the one hand, the bigger a population, the more diversified the risk, and typically you can get a rate advantage out of that. It's interesting because we currently get the benefit of that out of TRS, which is one of the largest populations, healthcare population coverages in the country. The downside that's exacerbated in something as big as TRS, but also kind of raises its head when you end up with consortiums, which is what that means if we're pulling together a handful of districts, is you now have to come to terms with different needs, different wants, what people are willing to do for cost controls or not do for cost controls, what District A wants may not be palatable to our district. And so you have those trade-offs. And so I think that, that we're getting the benefit of a large population by being in TRS. It may not feel like it, but we are. However, I think that we have the capacity actually to outperform that. We'll see if the modeling proves it out in the coming year, if that's the direction y'all choose to go. But I think we have the opportunity to do some things that we don't have the flexibility to do because it isn't just our plan. And I think that, that is paramount in what's going to give us leverage more than anything else.
So if we pulled away, perhaps it would be a better rate?
If we pulled away, we're able to show that our wellness is better than the population because we keep producing it. We're not quite there, but we're getting there. And we leverage one healthcare system and tell that healthcare system, by the way, we're just, we're sending our folks to you and we want a different contracted rate. And then there's other things that you can do, too, is that, as it applies to the Affordable Care Act and some interactions between our program and the Affordable Care Act. And it's, it's a lot of details, but there's, there's a number of strategies that we could implement that we don't have the capacity to implement as a member of a large plan.
Right. Well, anything we can do. I love the, the idea of a model for a year to see what it would look like if we did pull away. And maybe with all these districts thinking about pulling away, maybe that'll send some kind of message to TRS, and they'll realize that there are other options, they're not the only, the only place that we can get our health insurance. But I do appreciate you and your team looking into this, and please keep us posted on what you find out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Okay, I have just a couple, Mr. Cale.
Yes, sir.
I kind of pick up a little bit, jumping off of where Ms. Fowler left off, and where, I think you got another question from Ms. McMurro about this, about other districts and their experience. And I know you said you hadn't, hadn't had any in-depth discussions with folks, but you did know some folks had left TRS Active Care, and their initial move was a regretful one. Are you aware of any districts where there was not regret, and they, they feel like they won by leaving?
I'm aware of, I'm actually not. I'm aware of districts that, that have been out and self-insured and have, I don't know if this is the proper way to say it, but I think anybody who manages the complexity of a healthcare plan matures in their, in their knowledge and their capacity over time.
Right.
And so that's not a critique of anyone. I think that's just a natural evolution of managing a complicated system. And I think there are districts that were self-insured, have been self-insured for a while, and actually are consciously choosing not to go into TRS because they've got their self-insured plan in a, in a position that they believe it's more advantageous to them than, than opting back into TRS.
Okay. So I mean, and also to put this a little bit of context, I mean, I feel like it's not just schools, it's not just schools in Texas. I mean, even on the private side, folks are encountering increases in premiums and reduced coverage in essentially every industry that offers healthcare plans. So I would, I'm making, I mean, it was in your presentation, but one reason you're looking at a self-funded option at this point is I, because we looked at this, we did say last year, I'm assuming none of the actual insurance providers that are out there in the market that we thought maybe we might look at last year, we don't think we're going to get cost savings if we were to shift to them, right?
I do not have confidence that if I go to the open market with 106% claims ratio, although it's better than it has been in the past, which I know you know this, but by definition means that we're, for, for our, our population, we are spending more in claims than we are taking in premiums, that, that we'll have an alternative provider other than maybe an incentive rate that would say, I'll fully insure you and I'll give you a reduction because I know that you're costing your current insurer more than you're currently paying them, but I'll give you a lower rate. That, I don't see that as being realistic.
Okay. And do you have a sense, I know the modeling over the next year sounds great to me, I support that plan. Do you have a sense at this point, based on what we already know, the magnitude of cost savings you think you could get if the trend lines continue on the wellness, et cetera, from moving to a self-funded plan?
Yes.
Do you want to share?
I'm sorry, just kidding around a bit. I do, I've seen it. Obviously, I would have made a different recommendation if I felt like I could take it to the bank. I think there's validation that has to be done. I think that there's some very interesting proposals in terms of willingness that hadn't been there in the past, of some of these large systems willing to commit to five-year, not premiums, because premium is part of the plan, but cost of services. And I've seen that modeled, and I've seen also a modeling when the interaction between a self-funded plan and the Affordable Care Act plans potentially interacting in a way that has the capacity to reduce your cost. It's a little complex, but once it's in play, it may well have a substantial reduction. And you could talk about anything from saying that we're able to mitigate these 10% increases going forward, maybe to 3% to 4% increases, all the way down to, if you're really successful, you're talking about 15% or 20% decreases on what we have today.
Okay. And see, that, that's really helpful for me to know because sort of a, from the perspective of, we've done these survey questions, and we've been talking about this for a long time. And I think if you ask folks generally, would you like lower healthcare premiums? The answer is overwhelmingly, absolutely, I would.
Yes, sir.
But knowing the world that we're in, which is a bad one, but it's bad for sort of everyone, I think it matters what the magnitude of that cost savings is because there is in here, and it's listed as the second priority, it's the switching of your provider.
Yes.
And so my worry is, is that if we just throw, you know, if we go out there and there is cost savings, but the magnitude isn't significant enough to overcome the pain of some, having to tell someone, the doctor that you've had for 20 years is not going to be part of this transition. You have to go find a new one.
Yes.
And I think, right, then you're going to hit a different passion point, and we've committed down the road of, well, we found something that's cheaper. Is it cheap enough to make that sort of medicine go down with some sugar? Because if not, what's going to happen at that point, which I think some of the other districts are going to run into, is that's when you get the buyer's remorse.
Yes.
As I will say, anecdotally, I mean, sort of similar to Mr. Will Banks's experience, you know, personally, when, when my family, when we moved to California many, many years ago, for a short time, we had to get new providers everywhere. And my wife's health insurance is what we had to use, and it was with one provider. It was with Kaiser Permanente. And it was great. We loved it. But we were in a position of, of getting brand-new doctors because we were new to the area. And then when we moved back home, though, we just went back to the providers we had been using for years. If it were sort of the opposite scenario, where I had been using the same people for years, and all of a sudden, I'm still here, and I'm told that I have to get someone new, I think that's just a, that's a scenario we, is there anything that you surveyed on at which you, you got, you got a sense of the folks that you talked to from, how much savings is it worth to you to make that switch?
No, because it's such a, the short answer's no, because it's such a variable that we weren't able at that point, because we really hadn't modeled it in a way we could publicize it to them in a confident way. So we weren't able to say, this is what it is, and is this, is this enough? Or, or even try to grasp what is 10% versus 15% versus 20%. So no. My hope, my objective is that by going through this projected modeling process I was talking about, we will have a very close model where we can say, this is what it actually looks like, we believe. Is this now acceptable to you? And we're talking about that in September, October next year. At the same time, the TRS will have published their rates, May or June. So we'll be able to put the whole picture in, in clear view for people to say, okay, you felt what the increase was this year. This is what it would have saved if we'd gone outside, nominal or significant, don't know yet, but we will then. Now, what is your feedback? So that was the intention for the next 12 months.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have. I do want to end where I, where I did last year, in every time that we talk about healthcare, which is to give credit to this district, and in particular, you and your staff, Mr. Cale, on how to get here and putting, in context, just how important your work has been in the context of this for districts, for the entire state. Just, you know, brief history lesson, but if we go back to 2019, we were in the world where no districts could get out of TRS Active Care. Everyone was locked in. We could see the spiraling on the horizon, and this district made the strategic decision to, and we, we brought you down to Austin with this and sat you in front of a bunch of legislators, and we got a bill dropped that would have carved out a pilot program for this district to get out, to see what the world of, outside of TRS Active Care would be. Bill failed, but it started some really important conversations with TRS, and those conversations led to, eventually there was a bill dropped to where everyone could get out with the five-year restriction. And here we are today. And so there's been a significant change. It can be traced back to the work that this district and your staff did. So I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
And the fact that we now have a choice and we're being able to have these conversations, we couldn't do that just five years ago. And so very, very grateful for the work that y'all have done.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call recess at 8:23. Let's, let's say it'll be about 10 minutes, and we'll be back on the dais. All right, it is 8:36, and we are back from recess. We'll move on to our last, our last report for the evening, Item E, 2019 Bond Update Report. Dr. Smith.
Trustees, I would like to invite Kelly Horn up for our bond update. I want to thank Kelly. If you all remember, this was moved from our last meeting because we were pretty late into the night, and Kelly was ready to present the last time. And so he's here tonight to present to us. Kelly, thanks for your patience.
Certainly, yes, sir. President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for letting me present tonight. And thanks to Selena, she's the only one to hear me tonight. So everybody left. I thought everybody was staying for me. I really did. That's right, we do have a few over there. That's right, thank you. All righty. Well, let's jump right into this. I'll take you straight to, to the baseline slide that we always show you, and I won't linger here, but you know, the- slide that we always show you and, and I won't linger here, but you know, the numbers, but it gives us an idea of where we start from. We've seen a significant amount of change from our last presentation that I made to you. Not a lot to this slide, but there are a couple of numbers I'll point out. In February, we'll have another issuance, our last issuance for the 2019 bond. That will be an issuance for the remaining amount that you see there of 163 million and, and some change. And so, all of that is for, for the facility side. If you remember, I mentioned last time we were here, that we took a portion of unused funds that, from the facility side to make Fine Arts, Technology, and Transportation whole, all the way through their portion of the bond. And so, they could go ahead and begin to move towards selling, or pardon me, purchasing what they needed to, to finish out their portion of the bond. But we're now in the process of moving forward with our Phase Four and Five projects aggressively. And so, we need the remaining amount of funds to be issued so that we can move forward in, with those projects. The other number I'll mention to you is the number in the additional proceeds category, which is, I call below the line. It's roughly 45 million, or almost $46 million now. That was just a bit over 41 million the last time I presented to you. So, we've again seen significant uptick in our interest earnings. That number will drop, though, in, in here shortly because we'll pay, we'll have an arbitrage payment that we have to make. And, and that's between five and six million the last time I was, I looked at that number with our finance team. So, but it's, there's still a significant amount of interest that's below the line. And if you remember, we don't spend that at all until we get to the end, right? That's, and that helps us along the way. So, I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. This is just simply, the pie chart's what I really want to draw your attention to. We'll have an infusion of, of funds from that $163 million that will be sold or issued in February. But we've, we have over 50% of our funds, pardon me, expended at this point. And we're quickly spending down that encumbered amount. And we're, and you'll see later in some of the slides I have, where between the last time when I was here anticipating to, to speak to you, and now we've had quite a number of projects that have been lent. And so, those dollars will also, this will change significantly the next time I bring it to you. This slide, again, has moved quite a bit. There are quite a number of projects that are in the planning stage and moving quickly to design. That, that will happen over the next couple, over the next month, month and a half, as we prepare for those other, that last issuance to be made. But we have a tremendous amount of projects in construction. We recently, just in the past couple of weeks, we closed out the Phase Two and Phase Three playgrounds project entirely. So, it's going to look a little different on the slide, but we have closed it out. And so, those projects are finished entirely. And that was a significant move to, to move projects from closeout into completion. On this slide, you can see the Glassby and, Glassby Field and Martin High School projects are in construction. And we've made tremendous progress now that we've completed Arlington High School's softball field. And if you drive by, you'll even see that we now have lights on that softball field. So, that's a change from the last time I presented. We were, we were pushing hard to, to make sure those went in and were approved by the city so that we could then release the Bowie and Seguin projects with the lights intact, or in the project as well. So, those will move over to bid stage pretty quickly and then hopefully into construction early part of the spring. And then I'll jump into some renderings because, some renderings and then obviously some progress photos. We all know what our rendering for Glassby Field was intended to look like. And if you look at this, you can see in the foreground, you'll see some of the concession and restroom buildings, the locker room buildings. This is, there's a, this is about a month old now, pardon me, but we'll, we'll bring you some updated photos shortly. But they've made a lot of progress. If you look in the far, at the top of the screen, you'll see the, the walls for the band hall addition at Martin High School are moving along very quickly. And so, this project is, is moving quickly. They've made a lot of progress since I took, or had this photo taken. Our Phase Two projects, again, the, the playground equipment, Phase Two, it's moved over now to the completed stage. And we're quickly moving towards closing out, or we'll be trying to close out Bailey, Arlington High, and also the Johns and Sam Houston projects. The Wildmon Field project, actually, what's interesting there to, to note is that today, we received the first round of, of proposals from our general contractors as a part of the CMAR process. So, we'll move quickly to the Phase Two interview stage. And hopefully, we'll have a CMAR selected for Wildmon and Cravens, which will show up in the next slide or two. And then some renderings, again, of Arlington High, just to kind of bring you to where we are today. This is what we, what we, what we designed and what we expected it to turn out to look like. And, and this particular rendering, I'll stop here. I think if you drive south on Cooper and you pull up to the Park Row intersection and you look to your right, this is pretty well what you see, right? So, it's really impressive. The pictures I have, again, are about 20 days old and they've made a tremendous amount of progress in that push. And so, but it's still very interesting to see where they are, or where these pictures were and where they are today. Landscaping is completely installed at the front now and along that north face of the cube, as the campus calls it. And then on the inside, I thought it'd be really cool for you to see kind of what the library is starting to look like. I'm a big fan. I love the lights, actually. So, I think they're really cool. But it's an amazing look. And, and if you saw it today, it's even, it's even more impressive because furniture is, has been moved into the campus at this point. And so, we had furniture in for some of you who got a chance to take a quick walk with me recently in the science areas. But, but at this point, we're preparing to, to accept teachers to move their belongings over right before the Christmas break. And then, of course, once we get back from Christmas and, at Christmas break, the kids will move into that facility as well. This is one of the science rooms that we had. We staged the furniture off to the side while we finished up some work on the demonstration millwork for the teacher there. But at this point, the science classrooms are complete with ceilings dropped in and that sort of thing. So, they're ready to go. This was the Arlington softball field rendering before the lights. Hopefully, I can get a chance to bring you a picture next time where we have the lights and, and even maybe a picture of some of the other fields in progress. I wanted to keep Duff in here because I wanted you, wanted you to be able to see the library now, in particular, in the gym, because I have some interior photos, thanks to Ryan. And so, you can see, they, they're very impressive. They are using the library now. The gymnasium will be used shortly. They're finishing up a few, a few things relative to the inside of the gym, but it'll be ready to go. And of course, this is a storm shelter as well. So, very impressive. And we, we, you already know that we've finished the Bowie High School and Seguin High School track and, and field upgrades and, and done also some work at Seguin to restore their practice fields fully. So, they're able to use those now. So, tremendous improvements there with regard to irrigation and new sod and that sort of thing. And then again, Bailey, I wanted to bring Bailey back so that you could see how the cafeteria looks once furnishings were moved in here in this picture. So, they've got, these are, this is not only the inside of the cafeteria finished out, but also a look at the new cafeteria tables that we have. That's representative of cafeteria tables we replaced across the district. In Phase Three, there's a couple of things here that have shifted since I prepared this. Obviously, the playground equipment, Phase Three, has moved out and closed. Shorts completed as well. Amos and Goodman just bid, they just bid and we just turned that into purchasing. That will be, that'll go into the construction phase shortly. And so, and then Cravens Field was also part of that Wildmon and Cravens package I mentioned, that we just took proposals for the CMAR today. And then I think the, the next photos regarding Joey Rodriguez Junior High School will be impressive as well. This is what the rendering looks like for that campus. And they've made tremendous progress. This is actually, again, about two to three weeks old. And they are in the process of putting, masonry of the brick walls up now. So, it's moving very quickly. The roofing is, is finished at this point. They've done, taken care of all of that. So, it's moving quickly and it, it really will take shape over the next couple of months as we prepare to begin to wrap that up right about the time that summer starts so that we can move furniture in and be ready for the kids in August. Couple of smaller projects, but still of significance. Both Pope and Johns will receive new gymnasiums slash storm shelters for those campuses. And so, they've made quite a bit of progress since these photos were taken. But even the significance here is even our older campuses, right, the more mature campuses are still receiving significant improvements to make things better for the students and the staff. Our Phase Four and Phase Five projects are, the significance here is, of course, that the CTC is in design, but that will move into bidding during the holidays. And so, we'll, we'll hopefully have that out to bid beginning in December. And then right after the holiday, I hope, I hope to be able to bring that package forward for your approval so that we can get started on that addition. That addition will be a 10 classroom addition that will extend that curved, that curved portion of the building along 303. And then, and then the Service Center project, of course, that, that houses, or that will house a Security, Transportation, and Health Services team for Dr. Hill. And the design work on that is rapidly coming to a close as well. And we'll have that out to bid shortly and hopefully be ready to start that in the spring as well. So... And then our Phase Four projects, you can see there are quite a few that are in construction. These are, this is that first portion of work that I mentioned before. The district itself is taking on a lot of these projects and doing the general contracting. It's saving a significant amount of money. The scope of work on these projects is much more simple. So, for example, at Owlsley, most of the work at Owlsley was centered around HVAC replacement, that being chiller replacement and boiler replacement. We can do that and general contract that ourselves. That's been done and we're in the process of preparing to receive all that equipment and begin over the holidays to install that. The PDC, you've all been, probably been down there during the construction work we did. We, of course, general contracted that ourselves as well. And we did all the pavement drainage. And if you remember, at the front door, we had a pretty significant fall in that foundation. And so, we did a lot of engineering work on that and had that reworked, made a tremendous change in the look of the PDC, along with just having it painted. We had our team in maintenance paint the outside of the building and clean the brick. And so, it's really given the PDC a facelift, a facelift. It's 600 New York. That was roofing replacement. That project is coming to, to the point where we're going to close that out. It's completed. And then some of the others in there like Ferguson and West also were HVAC projects that we're doing in-house. Still bond dollars, but we're managing that ourselves and we're able to save money to do that. The other projects that you see in the planning stage will also be done the same way. Many of those are projects where there'll be maybe painting the interior of the school, maybe signage and some small things here and there. But it's all things that we can do internally and manage ourselves and be able to save money. And then, of course, our hub numbers, I will tell you that we've taken just a little bit of a dip. If you remember, the last time I came, we were at 26.81%. We've dropped down to 25.89. And if you remember, that'll change. It'll go up and down a little bit as we go. This is probably reflective of some of those contracts we, that we started, pretty significant projects with Joey Rodriguez and others. And as we get into some of the, when you're, when you're early in a big project like Joey Rodriguez Junior High School, your contracts are few and you may not have as much hub participation at that point in time. But as I get deeper into the project and I have more trades come on, you'll see higher levels of participation. That number will start to jump back up again. So, it'll kind of, every time I start a project, it'll take a dip. And then when we get down deep into it a bit more, it'll come back up. But our mission is still to keep it in the mid twenties to even close to 30 if possible by the time we get to the end of the program. And then I'll briefly go through a couple of these slides for Fine Arts. I've had a chance to talk with each of the, the folks that oversee these areas. And they're here too, if you would like to talk to them directly. But in Fine Arts, they have their, their dollars and, for the remaining portions of the bond. And they're making quick work to, to begin procuring the remainder of the equipment and uniforms and things like that that they need. Dr. Upchurch had talked to me about what they have planned. And that's, with the remaining amount of money they have, they're going to finish out doing camera upgrades and things like that, as well as a refresh of devices for students. And, and again, he's available if you have specific questions this evening for him. And then on Transportation, I visited with Dr. Hill and they're in the process, at this point, they've done all of the work to plan for the vehicles they need, whether it's buses or white fleet. And they're in the process of preparing those purchases now. And those, their, their available funding should start to move quickly over into the encumbered and expended columns. With that, I'll open it up for any discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Any comments or questions from trustees? Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. Just one clarification. So, I had been out to Seguin a couple of times and their practice field was in very sad condition. Crevices, grass wasn't growing, anything like that. So, while ago in your report, you said that it had been taken care of irrigation and sod.
Yes, ma'am. We, internally, we had the maintenance group, our irrigation team went out and the irrigation system that was put in when that school was built was, didn't hold up well. And so, our team completely reworked that in-house. Our grounds team then followed up with complete laser leveling of the field and set the crown properly and then overseeded that field. It's been overseeded with rye since that time. And the coaches were grateful to have that done. It's beautiful. I just drove by and looked at it about two or three days ago when we had the incident with the storm. And I took time to, while I was out there, to just go check on it. And it's beautiful. They're really, I think they'll be very proud of it.
Thank you so much for that. Because I know they had their MAC Center and the field was right there and they couldn't even use it.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's been that way. And I know, I think your team had come out once before and tried to do something and it wouldn't grow, the grass wouldn't or something. I don't remember. But I'm just so glad to hear that that's all taken care of and that they can use their field. So, thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other comments or questions from trustees? Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And apologies to our board parliamentarian because this comment is not exactly germane to this discussion. But I think kudos are in order for our quick response to Seguin High School due to the
Yes, sir.
severe weather on Monday. I'm hearing a lot of accolades from certain
People?
About just how amazing job, not just your team did, but food services and the teachers who all came together. For those of you listening at home, the severe weather that rolled through early Monday morning blew out quite a number of windows at Seguin High School. And fortunately, it was all safety glass and just shattered the way it was supposed to without being too dangerous.
Correct.
And the response from district staff and campus staff was pretty amazing. Got it cleaned up and turned around without much disruption to the school day. So, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Richardson? None? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you all.
That concludes the report section of our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to our action items. Our first action item, Item A, is the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Dr. Smith.
I'd like to invite Darla Moss, our CFO, up. Board, as you know, we present this annually. We work in conjunction with an outside auditor for this. But I want to thank Ms. Moss and her entire team that works hard to get all of this information together for the auditors. This is not a, a light lift. This is a heavy lift in a system. And we're really grateful for Darla and her leadership for that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. One of the board's many roles, of course, you, you all know, and responsibilities is to ensure that there is an external audit and to ensure an end-of-year financial report is completed and submitted to the Texas Education Agency. So, tonight we have Ms. Selena Setas, and she works with Whitley Penn Audit Firm. She is the engagement partner that represents AISD. Tonight, she'll share an overview of the audit process, key findings, and any recommendations for improvements. As Dr. Smith said, this is a very cumbersome process. We started about six months ago. I'd like to thank Selena and her team. We work very closely together. I'd also like to thank the different departments in the district. This not, is not just finance, but we have to reach out to other departments as well. And then just a special thank you to the finance team, Financial Services, our direct, Executive Director of Financial Services, Mrs. Bridget Lewis is here tonight. And then our Accounting Director, Mr. Sean Guan, he's not here tonight, but it's a heavy lift for, for them and their team. So, welcome, Selene.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. President Chapa, Dr. Smith, and members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. About a couple of weeks ago, we met with the Audit Committee to go over A couple of weeks ago, we met with the Audit Committee to go over this report and the, and the presentation in detail. So I'll go over some of the, the highlights here tonight. As Ms. Moss indicated, I am the engagement team, but I do want to thank my team as well, Dan Edondes, who was the senior manager and did most of the heavy lifting, along with Jessica Weisman. And then Roger Tovar was actually here presenting last year on my behalf, because I think I had surgery around your board meeting time. And so he was the quality control reviewer. And then Michelle DeRamos was also the associate. So thank you to my team as well. So the purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, and you can receive one of these three presented on the slide. Every entity wants to receive an unmodified or clean opinion, but as alluded to earlier, it, it does take a lot of work on not just our part, but your, the district's part as well, because we are here disrupting things for six weeks, but they're having to keep this together all year round. So it started with planning in the springtime, early springtime, March, April. We started with our internal control assessment. We identified the key controls, tested those controls, and that helped us design our procedures once the district closed its books. As of June 30th, 2024, we came back late August, early September, and continued all the way through this week. We had weekly status meetings, even if they just took 15 to 30 minutes. And again, I want to thank the finance team for their efforts. They worked late every night until we received all the information that we needed to get here tonight. As Ms. Moss also indicated, we do work with various departments, not just directly with the finance team. These are the control areas that we focus on. And then especially when we deal with our federal programs, this year we tested, we'll see here in a bit, outside of the, what finance could typically give us, we had to venture a bit out into, to the district. Our substantive procedures start with a basic flux analysis, what changed from prior to the next year. We go a little bit more in-depth with the ratio analysis, then do our predictive testing, vouching, meaning that we're going to review an invoice. We're going to look at the bank statements, trace it all the way through the bank account, or we'll confirm with third parties, with your cash, investments, or your bonds payable. And then finally, when we don't send out confirmations, we can pull the information ourselves from the TEA payment report, the comptrollers report, and then for state aid, we look at the payment ledgers and summary of finances. All of this was to get us here. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements with no internal control findings or financial reporting, nor any findings related to compliance as it relates to the financial statements themselves. There's a second part to our audit where we have to perform a single audit, which is in accordance with the Office of Management and Budget. That comes from the Code of Federal Regulations for federal grants. You spent $104 million this year, and as I alluded to earlier, we didn't just focus on the educational grants. We also looked at child nutrition cluster, so we worked with that department significantly to get through that audit. So we want to thank them as well for, because I know they're busy day in and day out. We are issuing an unmodified opinion over each of these federal programs, and we don't have internal control findings either. When we look at the government-wide financial statements, there's two sets of financial statements in your Annual Comprehensive Financial Report that is before you, and you also received a PDF of it, but you'll notice that it's close to 200 pages. But the first set of financial statements mimics that of a corporation or a business, and it provides the net worth of the districts, of the district, and it includes all of the long-lived assets, as well as the long-term liabilities, unlike what you see in the general fund, which we'll discuss here in a minute. So the total assets totaled $2.2 billion, with capital assets making up the bulk of that, followed by cash and investments at $846 million. You also have deferred outflows of $179 million related to the pension and OPEB items. And then, as we move down the statement of net position, we have the total liabilities of $1.9 billion, with bonds totaling $1.3 billion. And then you have those two items that have been with us as early as 2016 for the net pension liability and net OPEB liabilities of $294 and $116 million. One thing that I will always make sure to note is that these liabilities do not represent a check that you'll have to write anytime in the future. It's not like your bond's payable. It's not like your account's payable. This is your proportionate share of the, the liability at the state level, and your proportionate share is determined based on the contributions in relation to all contributions at the state level for all participants. Finally, you have your deferred inflows at $212 million. Those two are related to your pension and OPEB items. The net position or net worth of the district is $280 million. And the final comment I'll make is that when TEA issues its first rating, they do back out the net pension and net OPEB liabilities from this final number, and I believe it's indicator five that is rated and, and adjusted for these two liabilities, further evidence that it's not something that you'll have to worry or fund in the future. The general fund budget to actual, we're going to focus on, on this fund because it is your operating fund. You do adopt a budget. The actual, annually and amended throughout the year, actual revenues of $632, $13 million were under budgeted amounts by $5 million, while your actual expenditures were the same as your actual revenues, but those came under budget by $20 million. You had other financing resources of $2 million, so where you would have broken even, you added $2 million to fund balance. Total ending balance is $270 million, and, and towards the end, we'll compare that to expenditures and give it a little bit more meaning than just reporting the final amount. When we look at the general fund revenue analysis, compare current year to prior year, and then current year to the final budget for the current year, we'll see that your local revenue, you had budgeted $325 million. The bulk of that is going to be your property taxes. You were about $4 million under in the local revenue, and last year was $384 million. There's nothing to be concerned with. If you recall, this is another year of compression of your tax rate. So once you apply the compressed tax rate to the property values, it reduces the tax levy, therefore reducing the property taxes. When we move over to the second bar chart, or section of the bar chart, you'll see that your state revenue, you had budgeted $285 million. Actual results were $280 million, and last year it was $187 million, a huge swing there as well. Remember that there's always an inverse relationship between property taxes and state aid. So where property taxes decrease, state aid will, will make up the difference. It's not a dollar-for-dollar relationship, but nonetheless, an inverse relationship. Your federal revenue was budgeted at $8 million, while your actual revenue was $12 million, followed by your actual prior year revenue of $17 million. And looking into it, your indirect cost data about the same, maybe dropped a little bit, but your SHARs did decrease in half, where it was almost $6 million, and this year was only about $3 million, and that's seen across the state of, of Texas. Your general fund revenue broken out as a percentage of the total, in this pie chart, you'll see that property taxes at $299 million are 49%. And then your, your state aid is, is the second-largest portion at 40% or $248 million. I have to mention the TRS on behalf, just to make sure that no one thinks that it's actual cash that you receive, that $32 million is offset by an expenditure amount. And that is just recognition of what TRS is contributing on behalf of the Arlington ISD employees at the state level, but it's your recognition of that activity. Interest income was $17 million, or 3%, and then you had other federal revenue, as I mentioned earlier, with your indirect cost, as well as SHARs revenue. Your general fund expenditure analysis, I won't go through all of this, but you will see that you were, you were under by about $20 million from the, from the budgeted amounts. However, you know, that's very close compared to all of the expenditures. Last year, your expenditures totaled $544 million, so you see the increase with the, the bulk of the increase primarily seen in your instruction and related services, close to $50 million. So that's, that's where you want to be spending your dollars. I also like to point out that your instruction and related services make up 61%, and then your general administration is quite low in comparison to districts across the state. You are on the lower end at 2% or 3%, where we see districts being on the lower end. And then the second-largest percentage is going to be your student support services, which includes transportation, et cetera. Your general fund balance, as we've seen, you'll see that in 2024, it did, it did increase slightly by $2 million, as we saw in the general fund analysis. What we, what TEA likes to focus on and what we worry about, and there's nothing to worry about, let me just say that, but when we analyze it, we focus on unassigned and assigned. TEA will look at those two components, and for you, it totaled $253 million this year. But how does it fare in comparison to your expenditures in the general fund? So $253 million is 41% of your, of your expenditures. So TEA recommends 75 days or 20%. GFOA recommends about 90 days, or about 30%, or 25%, excuse me, but you are well above that. You are June 30th year-end, remembering that your property taxes are not collected into the December-January timeframe, and you do receive a lot, many federal grants, which require that you spend the money first out of your general fund and then request reimbursement. So reserves are necessary early in, in the year. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moss and Ms. Setas? Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, President Chapa. And let me get my notes up. So this is a heavy lift, and thank you for all the great work that your team has done and has done since I've been involved on the board. You guys have done outstanding work for the district. But also to our team, thanks to Alexis, our interim chief internal auditor, for assisting on, on this audit, because it is a very heavy lift. We're going through it with the firm that I'm consulting with now, and they have six, 818 legal funds that they're now getting audited over. We're in audit season, so it's a very fun time, a lot of coffee being consumed at, at work. But to Darla and his team, and her team, sorry, I just want to point out, you, in the first part of the, the audit, on the first couple of pages, you guys called out that the Association of School Business Officials International awarded, has awarded Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting to Arlington ISD for the last 34 years. So congratulations, and thank you for assisting with that. Financial first rating from TEA has given us a rating of 100 for the first time. We've been right there on the verge of 100 for a long time, but I don't know how many years in a row that we've been with an excellent rating there. The Government Finance Officers Association has given a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence for Financial Reporting for the last 44 years to the district. So a lot of kudos are in order for our team in keeping us in sound financial shape. So having said that, I do have a couple of, just a couple of brief questions. I peppered Ms. Moss with a lot of questions beforehand. I apologize. So I'll keep you brief tonight. So when you look at our net asset values, sorry.
Net position?
Net position. Thank you. We call it net asset value.
In, in your world, yes.
In the other world. And I, forgive me, I'm not going to dig through the report, but when you compare us over the last 10 years with our net asset position, a lot of years, we had a negative net position. And I assume that has to do with the change of how we valued our property. Do we do a better job now of capturing the true market value of our facilities?
It, it's not the market value, but Ms. Moss was ahead of the game, because when she asked her team to go back and investigate the, the way the capitalization of your assets were being handled, she found, the team found that items that should have been capitalized were not. It wasn't unlawful use or unallowable use. It was just the way the policy was being interpreted. But I'm so glad that they did that, because last year, in this first rating, 2024, off of the 2023 financial statements, was the first year that indicator five was rated. Had Ms. Moss not done that, you all would have failed that indicator.
Yeah, that was the one that always got us every year, is the asset-to-liability ratio.
Yes, but it was that big change, digging in, like, what are we doing? And I have some districts that are going through that right now, because they have just entered into a huge bond program and say, oh, gosh, we have to reevaluate what we're doing, because they may, they may be affected with indicator five.
And did our work with defisance on our older bond issuances help reduce the liability side of that equation, or not significant?
It does, but, but mainly, you know, you, you want to be careful, because you depreciate your capital assets sometimes slower than you pay off the debt. So what was important is, when you're spending your, your bond funds, does it qualify as a capital asset, and can it be captured as an asset? Because even though you issue the debt, the formula backs out that liability for the unspent bond proceeds. But if you spend it on non-capital items, it won't help you. But them going back two, three years, I think you did that two years or three years ago, that really helped get you back in the, in the right direction.
Yeah, and just one, you mentioned that, that the OPEB and the pension liability, which isn't really a true cost to us, it's just one of those technical GASBY rules. But you mentioned a while ago that that started in 2016. Did it not start in 2018? Because that's when we saw the, the negative revenue and negative expense hit us.
Yes, so 2016 was pension, and we didn't see this radical change. In 2018, when the OPEB standard came about, under GASBY 75, I remember some of our, our partners had to reach out to the GASBY and say, what is happening? Because we've never seen, it's just unnatural for accountants to have a negative revenue or a negative expense or expenditure. So 2018 is when OPEB came on, onto the financial statements, and two years before that was GASBY 68 for the pension liability. And so, yes, you're, since 2016 or so, your financial statements have not been the same.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, I called out in the email that, I always forget, when you look at our last 10 years, our, our revenue trend and our expenses are all trending up, right? And then you get to 2018, and it's $160 million lower on both sides of the equation, and I'm like, you know, but it's...
It was wild for us as accountants.
Yeah, yeah, no. So, yeah, no, we didn't have a significant cut, and, and no, we didn't decide we could operate with $160 million less each year. That was just an accounting rule change.
That's correct.
So thank you, Selena, and Darla, and your whole team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I believe Ms. Richardson has some questions.
I only have one question. One of the documents that you talked about, when we were looking at the pie chart, you used the term SHARs and how it had a dramatic cut made to it. Could you explain to people who are not in the know and who may not know that terminology, could you explain a little bit about what SHAR stands for and what that did to us?
Sure. So the state, I believe the state of Texas underwent a federal audit, and then that, those, the effects of that audit, or the results of that, were not very positive, and then it affected school districts across the state. So SHAR stands for School Health and Related Services, and you're funded based on services provided to special ed children, and you get, it's a reimbursement, it is not a grant. Because of the issue between the state and the federal government, most school districts saw a 50% cut in that funding. And so where you had almost $6 million last year, it's about $3 million this year as well.
And to clarify, that is for our special needs students.
Well, it's, it's, it's not idea B, but it's, it's reimbursement based for, for a very specific purpose. Well, it's not idea B, but it's reimbursement based for a very specific purpose, for special ed children, but it's not the same as your idea B, nor is it the same as the state allotment for special education. It's a different cost reimbursement.
It's interesting that we talk about this tonight with SHARs, especially because, as Vice President McMurro referenced, we were at a meeting last night with other area trustees, and the topic of SHARs came up again, of how everyone across the straight state is feeling this cut.
Right.
That it isn't just us. And so to hear you say that number a minute ago, I just wanted to go back, share a little bit more background about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any other trustees with comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. We'll now move on to action item B, 89th Legislature Arlington ISD Legislative Agenda. Dr. Smith?
I think Vice President McMurro might be the best person to address some of this. Sorry, I was expecting her to do that. I'll take it if you want, Sarah, but...
I was just going with the script here. Ms. McMurro.
We're going off-road and off the script. Thank you, President Chapa.
I'm sorry, Ms. McMurro.
It's okay.
No, I am also sorry, because I deviated from the script in another way. We are due to take action on our annual comprehensive financial report. Is there, do I have a motion to approve the annual comprehensive financial report as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Will Banks to have a second. A second from Mr. Mike. Trustees will proceed to vote here. Ms. Richardson, can I get your vote? Can you please?
Do you need me to say yes?
Yes.
If not, a thumbs up.
Okay. Can you please say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I'm still showing that we have a trustee present who has not voted. Okay, now all trustees have voted. It's not on, okay, it is on screen. We have five trustees present in the room, voting in the affirmative. Ms. Richardson is voting in the affirmative, so that is a vote of six trustees, all present, unanimous in favor of the motion. Now we will move on to action item B. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. As I mentioned earlier on in our Governance Committee update, I wanted to bring forth a draft, and I want to thank trustee Fowler, trustee Haynes, superintendent Smith, and our partners at Strive for helping us develop this draft of our legislative agenda for the 89th session. I just wanted to give a really brief review of how this was born, and I'm really interested to know y'all's thoughts and proposed revisions, so that we can get this adopted and start promoting it to our community and our delegation. So we are presenting a legislative agenda on behalf of our school district, broken down into three main categories: academic growth, safety, and school funding. And our charge this time was to be responsive to what didn't happen last session, and something that we know is also critical to the students and staff of Arlington ISD, and unique to what our community needs. And we also want to hold our stance to make sure that public funds remain in public schools. We have adopted a formal resolution against ESAs, and we are holding that stance as well. Within the three categories, you guys will notice kind of the same format. We have broken it down into a position, and then an ask, and that's the bold sentence you see in each of the three categories. What are we asking our legislators to do? And then right underneath the ask, in my eyes, is the most important part, those are the proposed strategies, so that that way, we're not just asking and sharing what's not working. We want to help our, we want to partner with our legislators, and we want to give them some insight onto strategies that could help them develop bills that really make sense for success of the school district and the future of our students' futures. So one more thing we really try to do is be concise and accessible with our language. We want to make sure that the community and our delegation can actually understand what we're communicating here, and so I'm just really looking forward to this discussion and getting y'all's feedback.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Are there trustees with comments or questions on the proposed legislative agenda? Mr. Mike?
Yes, I've got some comments. Good comments, though. I really like the draft. I think a lot of time and effort has been placed into this draft that represents exactly what Arlington is about. There's some things that I want to point out and focus on that stand out to me underneath of academic growth, the second bullet point of reducing the overreliance on the STAR as a measure for student and school success. We know that our students, and I echo Dr. Smith on this, they're not just one test. We focus on the whole child concept of ensuring that our children not only receive the education that they are supposed to have, but that they have the knowledge and skills necessary to become successful adults within our community. And so I really love seeing that bullet point underneath of academic growth. Under safety, the third bullet point of prioritizing and increasing the support for student and staff mental health identification and services with flexibility to meet local needs. I think it was one of these conferences where I attended where they talked about mental health, and they talked about gun safety, and things of that nature, but it all stemmed from something mental. And I think later on our presentation, when we talk about one of these events that we went to, they focus a lot on the mental fortitude of these students, because once they figure out how to get to them mentally and fix their mental fortitude, then they're able to perform in the classroom and in life. So that stands out to me. And under school funding, there are two bullet points. So the second one, increase the student basic allotment. We know that it hasn't been increased since 2019, and we know that several things in this world have changed since 2019. We know that COVID came across, we know that inflation hit in several places. I know at one point, my wife and I were flipping houses, and the price of shiplap went from $8 for 12-foot board to about $20. So you can only imagine the costs of increases when it comes to attempting to educate our children. So that is something that I really hope the legislature, if any of them will ever watch this meeting, that they focus on. And then the second portion of that, base school funding on student enrollment rather than attendance. I'm a real big fan of that, because it gives you some type of stability when you know what that net enrollment is. And I know there are a few states who actually have passed bills. One, for instance, is Mississippi. They do a net enrollment, and they've increased that basic allotment. And if Mississippi can do it, then I think Texas can do it. I just think Texas is a little bit better. But those two things, I really like under school funding, and I think this is a very, very good draft to send to the legislatures and let them know exactly where we stand as a district.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. I was going to say, actually, the vast majority of states have moved to enrollment-based funding, and Texas is actually one of the outliers at this point. Are there further comments from trustees? Okay, I have, I just have two questions, really. I know, based on discussions we've had, you know, leading up to this, that the first bullet point under school funding is really the bullet point where we're doing the work on opposing voucher legislation. I was just going to ask if there was a reason we didn't specifically call out vouchers or say something like we have in the past about opposing the diversion of public funds to private schools? Is there a specific thought in mind with not sort of calling it what it is?
In our discussions with the Governance Committee, one of the things that we were asked to consider was how we made more positive language in this, and to shift it from just an opposition statement, which I think many districts focused on in the last legislative session, and it moved to more positive statement this time. In the same essence, there's another part in there about accountability systems, I believe, that we included, and again, that the essence is the same, is that if ESAs or vouchers are considered, we don't want public funds to go to them, and we want a fair and transparent accountability system applied to them. And, but we were, our consultants urged us to consider a little more positive language on that.
Okay. And I certainly appreciate and understand that. I know, having sat through many of the meetings with our consultants before, that's, you know, and as an attorney myself, I appreciate that advice. But on this particular one, I would be more comfortable either adding some language to the first bullet point or creating a second bullet point that specifically opposes any voucher legislation. This is going to be the main education policy item that the legislature will consider. I don't think there's any question what our position is on it. We can call it, you know, I think we should just call it like it is, and that, and I know we have been given advice, varied advice, by different folks who think that we should just accept that vouchers are going to happen and then move on to what could make that better for us. But I think, I'm happy to entertain those conversations if and when we get there, but I think our bottom line position should be that we oppose voucher legislation. That's been our position for, as long as I can remember, it's actually been the bipartisan consensus in this state for decades, and that is only something that folks have recently, some folks have changed their mind on, but I'm not one of them. And so that is, I will come back in a moment to maybe propose an amendment on that bullet point. The second question I had, and I'm not really sure where it would go, under the three priorities that we have, I can make a case that it should go under school funding, because it does, the issue destabilizes our funding in a significant way. But we have also included language in the past about the growth of charter schools, and that it's not something that's here, and I was just going to ask if there was a specific reason why it's not. Ms. McMurro?
Sorry, President Chapa. I'll come back for some clarification on your second question, but in regards to your first question, the first bullet about the public funds staying in public schools, this is very timely, because I actually asked that question about language at the North Texas Area Association of School Boards meeting last night, because we had TASB government relations there with us. And I asked them if, in our written legislative agenda, if they foresee any negative impact if we use, you know, one type of language or the other, and they said that the connotation that they foresee, having, only kind of connotation they could foresee being negative, is if it's a, if there's no voucher, or if the voucher passes, then we don't have a backup plan. And I'm really interested to hear what the other trustees have to say, because the way that our overall legislative agenda is written, I don't take it that way. I don't read this as a do or die, all or nothing. I think that these, each of our three categories offer tangible strategies, whether the ESAs pass or not. I am not afraid to keep more assertive language in there, but I'm also really curious to hear what the rest of our colleagues have to say, because this was a really similar discussion in our Governance meeting. And I did want to come back to you, and you might not be ready for this on the spot, President Chapa, but I wanted to ask if you can maybe propose two bullets, so that we can, oh, sorry, turn off the mic. Propose language for the two bullets that you're suggesting, so that we can get this adopted.
I mean, I think, I think one language, you know, language that would be maybe easy to just not have to make another bullet point would be continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools, and to oppose voucher legislation, and leave the rest of it as it is. Because I agree with you, I think the rest of our agenda already accommodates the situation where vouchers occur. I mean, I don't, I don't think we're passing it, we've passed, as you mentioned earlier tonight, we've passed a resolution against vouchers. I don't, I don't think we, you know, we're clearly not adopting an agenda that is wholly dependent on opposing vouchers. We've always been more holistic than that, so I think that we've got that covered. I just, it is our position, and I think we should just say it. It's, being nice with our words has not won us much the last few years. Okay, I will move to amend the first bullet point under school funding to read, to continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools, insert, and to oppose voucher legislation, and leave the rest of the bullet point the same. I have a motion for myself. Do I have a second?
I have a slide for a motion.
I don't have a second, so the motion fails for one of a second. Ms. McMurro?
Excuse me, I raised my hand and I seconded it.
Okay, I have a second from Ms. Richardson.
Sorry. And I added it, because as secretary, I'm editing the document as we go. That's why I need you to speak slowly, so we can make changes.
Okay. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I have it. I'm good now.
I'm not getting rid of the second part.
No.
I'm not.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If Ms. McMurro would like to amend the amendment?
She's not. She had a question as to whether or not I was proposing to amend the language after the comma, and I'm not. Yes. Okay, just to be clear, I'm proposing to change the first bullet to continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools, and to oppose voucher legislation, and leave the remainder of the bullet point the same. And Ms. Richardson has seconded it. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, seeing Mr. Will Banks?
I'm all for calling a spade a spade, and I think our resolution spoke loudly, but it's not just our consultants at Strive, who I really value their opinion, it's some of our local delegation, and folks at Raise Your Hand Texas and other advocates across the state, are, everyone in Austin is battle-worn from last session still with the V-word. And I think when we go into their offices and hand them this document, we don't want to close, you know, automatically shut them, have them shut down, because we're hitting them in the face with the V-word. I think we can be clear to our local constituents, our teachers, and our stakeholders in the community, and our other folks in Austin on how we feel, but I think we've got to heed the advice from very well-respected, knowledgeable consultants and advisors that we've worked with for a long time, and I wouldn't want to close off any conversations on the issue by including that language, given where we are post-election, and the way the numbers look like they're going to line up for easy passage. So now we need to really be pragmatic and shift our attention to controlling the damage, right? And really driving home and shape, not if they're going to pass, but how they pass, and make sure that we don't follow the path of other states like Kansas and Arizona, and blow up our budget, and really eat up and cause budgetary issues going forward because of ESAs.
So I have heard that advice, too, and I will be just very frank and say, if there's anyone in Austin who thinks that we're coming down to talk to them about something other than vouchers and to oppose it, I would like to meet that person, because this is what we will be talking about loud and clear throughout the spring. And I don't think, given the fact that we have passed a resolution, there's any doubt where this district stands. And this document will be disseminated to folks in Austin, but this is also the document that we have said earlier tonight in reference to, this is the document that we walk into conversations with, with our constituents here, with stakeholders in our community, and I don't, you know, I think the average person on the street understands what a voucher is and what it means to oppose a voucher. I don't think the average person gets what it means to continue... I don't think the average person gets what it means to continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools. I would hope that's going to happen in any legislative session. If we've reached the point where we're questioning whether or not we're going to continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools, we've got a real problem. And so I know what we mean with that language, but I don't think this is a time to be finessed. I will go back to, we've used nice words in '21. Doctor still got brought up, and the vote got closer. We used nice words in '23, the vote got even closer, and no one turned, has turned away a meeting with us, and no one has been unkind to us, because we have made clear our opposition to voucher legislation. I don't think it hurts anyone to put this in here and just make that position clear. If we've gotten to the point where we can't say the V-word, I think we've got much more substantial issues that we got to, we got to deal with, because people in Austin should know that, I mean, they're the folks who have forced this issue, and if they don't want to hear that word, the easiest thing for them to do is to remove it from their legislative priorities. And so that's, that's where I stand on that.
Thank you, President Chapa, and I really appreciate your passion about this issue. I do as passionately oppose vouchers, but what I want to do is focus on the third section, because that is critical for AISD right now, and for districts across the state who have all adopted deficit budgets, and bit hit with the same things that Mr. Mike mentioned earlier with inflation. This should be our focus. If you want to include that language, well, I know there was a lot of talk from our consultants on whether we should move the third section on school funding first, because that is the big one, right? It's the one that we're, we share with all the other districts across the state as the imperative that must happen in this legislative session. But I will defer to our legislative consultants on that, because they said it's best to put that at the end. So likewise on the vouchers, I'm going to defer to them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees on the proposed amendment? Ms. Richardson, did you have anything further?
I don't have anything so much further, as much as we went to NTSB last night, and one of the presentations they gave was about how important it is that, as this legislative session happens, is that, that we are all on the same page, we all operate with the same numbers, and that when we are going to speak to our legislative representatives, that we are going to them, making similar points, using similar numbers, but also using their numbers, not numbers that, that our department has created, our district has created. And I was going to bring it up later in trustee reports, but as long as we're talking about legislative priorities and numbers, they gave us a website that gives us Texas numbers that we all have access to called fundschoolsfirst.org, and this is put together by Frisco, Plano, and Vice President McMurrow, I forgot the other one, you could add on. But I think it's important that as we share this, we make sure that we're all on the same page with our legislative priorities, and make sure that we're using similar numbers. And I think this is a reference that we could use as a website when talking about this.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I do have a request to speak for Mr. Mike.
Yeah, I'll just be real brief. I think Mr. Will Banks brought it up about switching things as far as the bullet points, and Ms. Richardson brought up the group that spoke at NTSB last night. The first focus for them, at least on their slide, as I recall, was the basic allotment increase. Like, that was the first focus. And so I'm fine with adding the school voucher thing on the first one, but if we do that, I'd like to see it flipped, where I want the first thing to be either the school funding on student enrollment, rather attendance for the legislator, or that increase per student basic allotment, because they, they know how we feel. Like, they know we oppose vouchers. But something, you know, I don't know. I'd like, yeah, I'd like to hear from the other colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Ms. McMurrow. Ms. McMurro, are your comments related to the amendment that's on the floor? Okay, we'll move to vote on the amendment to add "and to oppose voucher legislation" to the first bullet point.
I've got an amendment to the amendment.
All right. Mr. Will Banks has an amendment to the amendment.
I'd like to amend Mr. Chapa's amendment and add, to swap the first section, I mean, the school funding to the first section, and move the academic growth to the third section.
So I'm going to rule the proposed, and I'm just trying to be fair. I'm going to move that amendment out of order, because it is not related
It's not germane.
germane to the "and to oppose voucher legislation" language, and that's a separate amendment we will come back to.
Touche.
Okay. We will now move on to a vote on the proposed amendment to change the first bullet point to read, "continue to allot public funds to Texas public schools and to oppose voucher legislation, ensuring all children have access to a high-quality education." Trustees will vote, and Ms. Richardson, can I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Okay. We have four trustees, four trustees who are present voting in the affirmative, one trustee present voting in the negative, Ms. Richardson is in the affirmative, the motion carries, the amendment to, the amendment carries five to one. We will now move on to, I believe Mr. Will Banks had a, an amendment, a proposed amendment.
My amendment is now moot.
Okay.
Unless, well, actually.
We'll now move on to Mr. Mike had a proposed amendment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mike.
Can Mr. Will Banks say his amendment again?
Sure. Mr. Will Banks.
I, I would like to make an amendment to put school funding as the first topic and move academic achievement to the third topic.
Okay. We have a motion to reorder the priorities, putting school funding first and academic growth second, or third, I'm sorry, third.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Mr. Mike seconds the amendment, so we have a motion for Mr. Will Banks, a second for Mr. Mike. Is there a discussion on the proposed amendment? We have Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa and Mr. Will Banks. So a little context, we, this was actually part of the discussion in governance as well. The proposal was to put student achievement at the top from our partners at Strive, given that we want to, we want to be sure and project that student achievement is our number-one priority as a school district. So I do want to go on record to say, all three of these priorities are of utmost importance this session. But the reasoning for putting academic, I'm sorry, yes, for putting academic growth on top is because we wanted, we wanted the visual understanding to be that that is our top priority, given that we're a school district. I'm very open to this, and so I just want to hear y'all's discussion, but I wanted to be sure to provide that context.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. In looking at the three areas, I think it would be more favorable for us to go with the academic rather than moving up with a want, so it doesn't start with, this is what we want, asking for that money. I think that we should start with the academic area first, rather than a want for money.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Are there any other comments, Mr. Will Banks?
Well, I agree, and I like that strategy, but given the fact that we've included a stronger stance against vouchers with vouchers in the first section, I'd prefer, because the third one is the most important part. If they don't read anything else, that's the one thing that we want to get traction on, is that third section. And then they're not automatically turned off, because we're hitting them up. I don't think they will, given the language that Mr. Chapa drafted, but if there's any deleterious effect from including that, they won't get to that until the third page. So that was my reasoning.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Smith?
I, I think this is important just to consider, is we, we're looking to you all to adopt the language in these, but the collateral that we produce of these might look different than this, too. And I wanted to be clear about that. So there might be individual messages pushed out just focused on school funding, or individual messages pushed out just focused on student achievement. And I say that just because I wanted to be clear that there, it won't always be in a rank order when we push out collateral to our community and when we print things. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that that was said before any further consideration happened.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for pointing that out.
Okay. I, Ms. Richardson, you are not requesting to speak?
I, here's my question, and just to ask bluntly, how much do we know that they are going to read this and understand what we're asking? Are they going to take this and put it in a pile with other legislative agendas and ignore us? And are they even going to care what order we put things in? And is it going to matter, is this going to matter until we actually go down and we talk to people face-to-face?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMurro?
I'm so glad you asked, Trustee Richardson. So the great news is, these conversations are already happening. I want to commend our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, because he has already had meetings with each member of our delegation, and these conversations will continue. The written legislative agenda will be promoted in, in modes beyond a PDF this year. We are going to partner with staff to create graphics, and as Dr. Smith mentioned, some of these are going to be published in bite-sized chunks, so that it will pick up traction, it will be eye-catching, the information will be accessible and understandable to the common person. And a lot of folks, the more they learn about school funding, and the more they learn about historic context and where we are now in regards to inflation, the more they are kind of appalled at where we are as a school district right now in Texas. And so we really feel called to make sure we're being that much more intentional about how we get our message across with these priorities. It is really hard to be concise when you do have needs to this level, but that was our goal this time, but we are really going to try to have new strategies for how we get this pushed out. But as far as speaking in person with our representatives and our senators for our area, that is an absolute must, and our district, our board has been great in leading that work, advocating for, in Austin, and even before the session begins. We partner with Raise Your Hand Texas, we're going to continue all that. But, Dr. Smith, I don't know if you want to chime in about some of the new strategies we're going to, we're going to have this year for communicating this.
Yeah, I think there's a few things that we're going to do. We're going to obviously use this statement, and the thing that I would add is, the language on here is as much about ensuring that our board in our community can be on the same page in our language and what we ask for, as it is about what the legislator will do with it, whether they put it in a pile or not. This helps form team around the legislative agenda in our community. As far as pushing things out, I think we could expect to take a look at different ways to actually insert some infographics that tell the story of Arlington ISD by bullet point and/or by subject area that are on these legislative agenda items, that you might also see different social media posts happen at different times, including some short, and I say short, videos that might go out to our community on these. So we're trying to think of multiple ways to get this information out, and it will be broken up, because, to your point, Ms. Richardson, if you just hand this paper to people, do ever, does everyone just read it, top to bottom, and understand and digest everything? I think we know that's not the society we live in right now.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the end of the day, that it's not just another piece of paper that goes in a pile, because we know everybody in Texas right now is asking for money. And we are in line, we know what this money will do for us, but we need to make sure we don't get lost in the bottom of a pile. I do think it's important, too, that at some point we get with our Arlington City Council, and we do some sort of meeting or something to work with them and let them know what our legislative agenda is going to be going forward, because they also are going to be the mouthpiece and be able to share, and they're going to have connections that maybe we don't have. And if we can leverage our working relationship with Arlington City Council, that is only going to do good for the, for our students and our staff here.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We do have an amendment pending to move the school funding section first and the academic growth section to be last. Seeing no other requesters to speak, we'll move on to vote on that amendment. Ms. Richardson, can I get your vote?
Yes, I think we should move it to the top.
Okay, I have a yes from Ms. Richardson. Okay, of the five trustees present, we have three voting in the affirmative, two voting in the negative, Ms. Richardson votes in the affirmative. The amendment carries four to two, so school funding will be the first priority listed, and academic growth will move to be the third. And then from our discussion, I believe, Mr. Mike, you had a proposed amendment to move the, to swap the first and second bullet points within the school funding section.
I retract that.
Okay. Mr. Mike has retracted his, his, his thought of amendment. Okay, so I, the other point I brought up was charters. I did have one more question to see if it came up in the discussions among the Governance Committee with our consultants at all, is we are in the position here in Tarrant County of having dealt with some very substantial changes to the way that the local appraisal, property appraisal board conducts its property appraisals. This is sort of a movement that's starting statewide, where it's happened in other areas of the state, local school districts especially, have, have lost significant amount of funding. This happened in Cameron County recently, in Brownsville, ISD lost 23 million. Tarrant County Appraisal District Board adopted these changes back in August. We're projecting to lose a substantial amount of money because of that. If it's not turned around, I have heard that the city of Arlington is, will soon project a significant deficit for the same reason. And there has been discussion statewide of whether legislation should be introduced to, to address this in some way, because even the sponsors of the bill from the last legislative session that have, folks have cited as authorizing them to do that have said that's not what they intended. Was there any discussion with our consultants or in committees about adding to the funding section something to address the, what's, the disparities that are going to happen with the changes in the appraisal system? Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Chapa. I don't recall that there was. I know that when we were at EdCon in September, there was some talk at the convention about this might get some possible traction, but our partners at Strive have not, have not, have not vocalized that to us, unless, Dr. Smith, your recollection was different. But we are also really trying to be mindful about how much we put on our legislative agenda. So I'm not, I'm not saying that that's not an important issue, but I want to hear y'all's thoughts.
Okay. Dr. Smith?
I would echo what you said. The only thing that I would add to that is, I do know that this legislation has been talked about already and is considered being filed to address some of that, but obviously nothing has been started yet, or nothing has been published yet on that one, to my knowledge. So the only thing that I would say is that we didn't go down to some of the detail on that, simply because we wanted to hone in and keep our, our position pretty short.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, for bringing up that topic. It is pretty important, and it's important enough that we added it to our management discussion and analysis in our AKAFA report as a future factor for upcoming budgets in the current, in the following years. And having said that, I would, I think it is warranted discussion if we include it. I am mindful of the size. I would actually prefer an even shorter version of our legislative agenda, but I know we're going to create easy-to-use graphics and break it up into sections, but I think this, not knowing what the language would be there, I'm not opposed to coming back and amending this legislative agenda. and amending this legislative agenda, unless you have particular language you want to propose tonight.
I could come up with something. I've been sitting here working on it. Let's see.
Not that I'm a betting man, but I was going to make a wager earlier about what time we got out, and I think we've already blown it.
Yeah.
So take all the time you want.
So I would propose ensure a, ensure fair property tax. Create property tax appraisal legislation that ensures Sure. Any discussion?
Is there a motion?
There's not a motion yet. Ms. McMurrow had requested to see if there's further discussion. Okay, seeing none.
Can you, can you repeat where you would want to see that verbiage added?
I mean, it can just be the last bullet point in school funding. A new last bullet point in school funding.
Can you read what you would propose it to be?
Sure. Create property tax appraisal legislation that ensures school funding is not impaired.
Thank you.
I'm open to your thoughts on that. Anybody's thoughts on that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Can I second that?
Yeah. So I will, I will, I will move to amend, to add that last bullet point. Mr. Wilbanks has seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on that amendment.
Yes.
Ms. Richardson votes yes. All five trustees present vote yes. The vote is six to zero to add that bullet point to become the last bullet in school funding. And I will stop there.
Really?
Yeah. I'm, I'm on a roll. Maybe I should just keep going.
Exactly 10:00 AM. I mean, 10:00 PM.
Okay. We will now move to discussion on the legislative agenda as a whole. I don't see any requesters to, I do, Ms. McMurrow?
I just have a motion to approve. Is that appropriate?
It, it is. So do I have a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented and amended?
Yes. Thank you, President Chapa. I move to approve the 89th Legislative Session Agenda on behalf of Arlington ISD as amended, as amended and presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second for Ms. Fowler. We'll move on to vote on the agenda as presented and amended. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
There we go. All trustees present voting in the affirmative, Ms. Richardson in the affirmative. The legislative agenda carries six to zero. We'll now move on to our consent agenda items. This is the portion of our agenda where we group items together for consideration at one time. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Have a motion for Mr. Wilbanks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Ms. Fowler. Trustees will move to vote. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson votes yes. All trustees present voting in the affirmative. Consent agenda carries six to zero. We'll now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
President Chapa, we do have one.
Okay. All right. We do have one speaker registered. Jose Riesga, is he present? Not seeing him present, we will now move on to superintendent's comments. Dr. Smith?
President Chapa, members of the board, thank you. I'm, I'd like to share some information with you all this evening about exciting things that have been happening in our district and some of our priority work that goes on on a regular basis. As you all know, you adopted the five priorities that you see in front of you this evening. One of the ones that I want to focus in on in this, my clicker is not working, so I'll need some help in the back. There we go. Is to hone in on the resources key progress measure. We are working on developing an agreed-upon campus needs index so that we differentiate supports for our campuses in our district. That's going to be big work ahead of us as well. But I also wanted to point out that this key, this, excuse me, this priority says maximize our resources to promote a thriving district while maintaining sound fiscal management. That includes far more than that is, than the key progress measure that is there. So next slide, please. I wanted to highlight some of the amazing work that Kelly Horn and team do for our bond projects that happen in our system. One of the things that has been so impressive was how we use facilities and how our community has rallied to build facilities to maximize the use for our students. I wanted to share our CVPA as an example. I know many people see on bond measures across the state, performing arts centers being requested in their communities. Where Arlington is different is there's an educational opportunity and not just a performance opportunity there, too. In the back of the house, we have a true performing arts school that is happening on a regular basis in that building as well. And I think that's phenomenal to share with our system. I also wanted to note Rodriguez Junior High School is being designed in, in an effort to really promote the academic growth that you want to see in our system. So when we talk about maximizing our resources, it's not just about dollars, it's about using everything that we have to point toward one thing, and that's student learning. And so I applaud our board, our community, Kelly Horn and his team for doing amazing work that is, goes beyond just the original thought of, how many dollars do we spend by student, or how many dollars do we pour into? We're using every possible way to increase opportunity for students in Arlington ISD, and I'm grateful for what you do for that. I wanted to jump into a discussion on the National Medal of Honor Museum. We're getting closer to the opening of it in Arlington, and the district is playing a big role in this. Recently, some of our teachers at Gunn Junior High Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy launched a pilot curriculum that promotes the Medal of Honor's values. That plan is for the curriculum to make its way to districts throughout the country, and Arlington ISD is on the ground floor of helping to ensure that's high-quality curriculum. But we're going to know all the time that that curriculum, when it's rolled out, started in Arlington ISD. Two weeks ago, I shared some highlights with you about security measures that were in place at Moore Elementary, and I'm highlighting Moore once again this week, but for a different reason. The National Elementary honors Society students at the school did an outstanding job leading a food drive that benefits Mission Arlington. The students did all the work and got to see their efforts rewarded when their donations were loaded up, as you see in front of you. Finally, congratulations to Martin Stem Academy student Maya Shaw for being honored for her research on preventing gun violence. Shaw finished second in the Science for Development Award category at the 2024 Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair in Los Angeles last May. For her work, Shaw also received a letter from Senator Ted Cruz for her efforts that could one day be critical to the lives of Texans and Americans. Way to go, Maya. This concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to trustee reports. Do I have trustees with reports? I know we have one coming from Ms. Richardson and Mr. Mike. Go ahead, Ms. Richardson. And I've got your mic turned on as well, Mr. Mike.
Earlier this week, Trustee Mike and I had the opportunity to go to Bowie High School to go and preview a segment of ADVID class. It's called ARMI, not Army ROTC, not to be confused with ADVID, A-R-M-I, At-Risk Male Initiative. This is a program where there is only one of nine in the country. It is amazing. Trustee Mike and I walked away wanting to change the world, and it's because of these gentlemen. These men put together a program, and twice a month, they get to create what they want to go and talk about. It can be anything from having mentors come in and talk to them about what it's like in the real world, and different jobs and careers they could take, but as simple as having a class of, we want you to teach us how to tie a tie. They have requirements when they come. You have to be dressed appropriately. That means you can come dressed in a suit and tie, as you could see, or you can come business casual. But that way, you know when you go out in the world, what is expected of you. These men, which, by the way, they refer to each other as men. They are not boys, they're not kids, they're not students. They refer to their peers as men. They used words when they talked about, how has this program changed you? They said, it made me responsible. It made me care about community. I know that I am loved. I know that I am mattered. I know that I matter. I know I am more than just grades. It taught me how to be a real man. A real man shows emotions, they care for one another, and they leave the world a better place. Over and over again, they talked about this. This program, when they talk about being at-risk males, what this looks like is they have the men, the men ask themselves, the students ask themselves to stand up, and you have to say why you're at risk. So the officers stood in front of us, and they each shared personal details. One's at risk because they're an immigrant with family members, a mom and dad that came with no high school education. Another one is at risk because he's never lived with mom and dad, he's only lived with family members. Another one is at risk because he doesn't know who his dad is. On and on and on their stories went. They showed vulnerability when they shared those stories, and because of that, they've inspired other young men to come into this program. We got to go, and not just were we there, but we also have Lamar High School students, staff participating, to come and see what they could do with this program at their school. Trustee Mike and I walked away amazed at what this does. It is no surprise at all that Bowie's test scores have improved so much, especially with our young men. And when I look at a program like this, I think there's a reason. I think there's a reason when we look at they're challenged and they're expected to be up here, they set the bar high, and they're achieving it. When I think about this, and when Trustee Mike and I talked, this is what we want to see a presentation done to the board. What can we do to challenge all of our students, especially students of color? What can they do to bring themselves up, hold themselves accountable, but better yet, they help their peers accountable? So I was impressed. Trustee Mike, what am I missing that, I mean, we walked away fired up?
Yeah, I did, I did. And I have to temper that down a little bit, but you covered a good amount of it. You know, humans, we're, we're social creatures. We like to be a part of a group, we like to be around each other, and as our youth are growing up, they're growing up in a different timeframe than we grew up. I think last I was in high school was in, like, in the late 90s. And things were different then than they are now. We look at Arlington, and there are some gang issues in Arlington. And these youth are choosing a different path. They call each other brother. And to hear them say, we don't want to do this action because we don't want to let our brothers down, just inspirational. You know, my background, I didn't grow up with a lot of money, but you know, at the time, you don't realize that you're poor until you step on, you're like, oh, I was poor. I didn't know that. And these kids are experiencing the same things that I did when I grew up, but they are taking advantage of every resource that we are providing as a school district to not only focus on their academics, but as I alluded to earlier, their mental fortitude. Every single one, like, and you know, you could hit them with hard questions on, is this really working for you? And everyone was standing up. This is why it's working for me. This is why I enjoy this program. This is why I want to do this program. If it weren't for this program, I would not be where I am today. And yeah, somebody might be cutting onions in here, but it's, it, I really enjoyed it, and I, I would love to see the board hear from these students, because from their mouths, it's just so impactful. I didn't know we were, you know, I knew Arlington ISD was a great district, but to see this program alive, it's, it's, it's awe-inspiring.
One of the things that got me, Trustee Mike, was when they talked about that this program made me realize I had potential I never knew. And so over and over, talking about, they use the words, I'm looking at my notes now, potential, structure, organization in life, community. And then when we got to go and talk to the coordinators, we talked to their avid coordinator, Sarah Holder. Principal Jones came in, AP Fowler's came in. And one of the things that Principal Jones talked about was that these boys want to belong to something so badly, that that's why the gangs, you know, they made them feel a part of something. And now they're getting an alternative to feel a part of something so much differently, and it will forever change their lives. These boys, these men, I am giving a discredit when I say boy, these men are going to be the one who change our world, and getting to see why, and the coaches who are investing them. We got to go and hear the coaches talk about who are leading this class, and their, Coach Campbell, oh my goodness, he went in and he explained the reason their program is so popular is he goes to Workman Junior High, he goes to Barnett, and he tells these eighth grade boys, when you come here, you can join these men, and you have a family waiting for you, and they're going to welcome you. We asked them hard questions, like, you know, do you get teased? You know, you come to school in a suit, you're not, I mean, we had saw a guy, he was dressed in a suit, a tie, a vest, you know, are you getting teased for this? And they explained, no, they are the cool kids on campus, because they're setting the bar, and they're expecting others to meet them where they are.
Yeah.
And I can't think of anything better when we talk about culture than to look at that type of culture.
And I'll add one last point. They hold each other accountable. So they have this thing called the hot seat, and it's very rarely used, but if there's a behavioral issue amongst one of them, they go in the hot seat, and all of the students take charge to ensure that that behavioral issue is fixed. And they adhere to that code. So it is, I mean, and it's something, it's something amazing to see.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mike and Ms. Richardson. Are there any other trustees with reports this, this evening? All right, seeing none. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
We do. We have several. Trustee Wilbanks would like to see additional details on the lever and newcomer data specifically to the areas that they are coming from. Trustee Wilbanks would also like to see available charter school data and enrollment that would intersect with our AISD data and overlap. Trustee Mike would like to see our levers data presented by area and by school. Trustee Wilbanks asked for data from Scott Cale, and it was a specific request that I did not get written down, and I will follow up with Trustee Wilbanks and find out exactly what that data from Mr. Cale was he would like.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have reached the conclusion of our agenda, and it is 10:15, and this meeting is adjourned.